Good evening, everyone. The meeting of the Monroe Township Board of Education will come to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance with our student board member.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a roll call, Mr. Gorski?
Mrs. Arminio.
I am present.
Mr. Braverman.
Here.
Mr. Chiarella.
Here.
Mrs. Demeo.
Here.
Mrs. Koleponowicz.
Here.
Mrs. Lang.
Here.
Let it be known that Mrs. Lang is participating via teleconference this evening in accordance with board policy. Mrs. Carino.
Here.
Mr. Ryback.
Here.
Mr. Russo.
Here.
And Mr. Rutske.
Here.
Madam Board President, you have a quorum present this evening. In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, place thereof posted June 8th, 2018 at all schools, the Home News Tribune, Cranberry Press, and filed with the Clerk of the municipality.
Thank you. At this time, we will go to number five on the agenda, approval of minutes for the public Board of Education meeting of April 25th, 2018.
Mr. Chiarella, Mr. Ryback, any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Then, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention or recusal?
Recuse. Abstain, whatever.
Are you recusing or abstaining?
No, the difference.
She's recusing or abstaining.
I don't think we were...
Abstain?
Yes.
Noted as an abstention, thank you.
Okay, the approval of the minutes for the closed session meeting of April 25th, 2018.
So moved.
Mr. Chiarella, Mr. Ryback, again, any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Recuse.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Ms. Arminio was opposing, Mr. Russo is abstaining, and Ms. Carino is abstaining.
So noted, thank you.
The approval of the minutes for the Public Board of Education meeting of May 9th, 2018.
So moved.
Mr. Ryback?
Second.
Second by Mr. Chiarella. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstain.
Abstain, that's Mrs. Lang. Thank you, Mrs. Lang. And the approval of the minutes for the closed session meeting of May 9th, 2018.
So moved.
Mr. Chiarella, Mr. Ryback, comments or questions? Additions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ms. Arminio was opposing. Abstentions?
Abstain.
Aye, abstain.
Mrs. Lang and Ms. Carino. Okay, and tonight on the agenda, we have a lot of presentations, so I will start off with the Historical Commission Essay Contest, and I will turn this over to Dr. Dori Alvik.
Okay, good evening. So, this year, Mrs. Casaleto worked with the Monroe Township Historical Commission for our inaugural essay contest at the high school. So this evening, Ms. Casaleto is going to introduce some of our members from the Historical Commission who would like to recognize some of our students.
Good evening, thank you, Dr. Alvik. It's my distinct pleasure to share with you some exciting district social study news and introduce you to members of our Monroe Township Historical Preservation Commission and students who will be honored tonight for our inaugural essay writing contest. As Dr. Alvik alluded to, we have a brand-new partnership with the Historical Commission, and it has led to a number of new initiatives and this essay contest being won. So we're very excited moving forward to have this collaborative forum to work in, and it will promote civic leadership, it will promote the kids finding a deep love for their community and just being great participatory citizens. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Mr. John Katerba, who is the Commissioner for the Monroe Township Historical Preservation Commission, and he's going to make presentations. Thank you.
Good evening. I just want to say thank you to everybody that's worked on this project, the Board of Ed down, the teachers, the teachers volunteered all their time to, with the Row Cappus students, making that a new thing this year, the first ever. I just want to say the history's always been here in Monroe, and it's just like you have to get the information out there for people to rediscover it. It's like my kid's discovering the Beatles for the first time, they think, "Yeah, this is great," you know, but you tell them it's been around for 50 years, you know, but we love to see the enthusiasm. The process to pick winners was very difficult. They were outstanding, these essays. They spent a lot of time, you could tell, people went out actually into the neighborhood, did their research, and they really put a lot of time, and everybody is a winner. They put in a lot of time, and they all deserve a round of applause for the hard work. These are very top-notch kids, you could tell just by the way that they were raised. They all obviously come from great families also, but I want to give them all a round of applause for the hard work and what they've achieved. So I'm going to turn this over to Lisa McCada, who's on the Historic Commission with me, and she's going to read off the names of all the participants and also the two winners that we selected.
Okay, so we're going to recognize first the participants. Srinri? Sarah? Sure, sure, if they're okay. Maybe we'll do a group picture then. Soham? Robert? Hargan? Our second-place winner with a $100 gift card is Berkaran Sadhar. And our first-place winner, a $200 gift card, is Katie Gallagher.
I just want to say our historic liaison, Len Baskin, could not be here tonight. He's at his granddaughter's graduation, but he extends his well wishes to everybody that contributed their time and congratulates all of them. The town's also given gift bags for each and every participant from the mayor and council to say their thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'd like to congratulate all of our award winners this evening, and it's nice to have an opportunity to have an inaugural essay contest, and we hope to see this continue in the future between us and the Historical Commission. Thank you. So we're going to change up the agenda a little bit, and we're going to go to C and give out the Academic and Student Athletes Recognition Awards. We have a lot of students to honor this evening, so we would like them to be recognized. So at this time, Dr. Kozak, Dr. Alvik, and Mr. Gorski?
Still there, Patty? Patty? Patty?
Yes.
All right, still there, good.
Yes, I'm here.
When Dr. Kozak and I talked about how we would honor our student athletes at a Board of Education meeting, he says, "Look, Ray, just make sure we don't have a lot of teams." It's got to be... So, we looked at it and we said, "Okay, how can we get this done?" Well, kind of underestimated things because we've had a phenomenal, an unbelievable year in athletics. We have six teams here tonight, representing just from the winter and from the spring. So that's a phenomenal job by our athletes. Let's give them a hand for that. On top of that, I'm pleased to tell you that we not only won six championships, we also won the sportsmanship award in the upper division in the GMC this year for all sports. And that's a tremendous view on these kids here because not only they're champions, but the way they conduct themselves. Let's hear it, you got a big hand for that. I just want you to know, I've been here for 31 years. When I started, in the winter and the spring, we had five varsity sports. So we actually have more championships than we actually, we have more championships this year than we actually had sports at that time. So, to move this along, the first team I'd like to introduce is the boys' lacrosse team. Coach Yononi, bring your men up. Our boys' lacrosse team has been to our county finals five out of the last seven years, winning twice. They're also the division champs along with the conference champs. Guys, stand up here so we can get a nice picture of you. Most of the guys have been at WO. Unfortunately, Coach Welsh couldn't come tonight because she was out sick, ran a run of fever. Coach Cummings, the assistant, was here tonight, which she did have a field hockey thing to attend, so she had to run out of here. So, right now, I'd like to introduce our girls' lacrosse team. Not only won the county championship this year, the conference championship, but this is the second year in a row that they've won it. It's a tremendous accomplishment, so the girls' lacrosse team, please come up. Our next team won a state championship, went undefeated, and also won a national championship. Our competition cheer team, please come up. Our girls' competition cheerleading team. Our next team, our conference county champs, the boys' ice hockey team. Last year, our boys won the state championship, and our girls went undefeated and won the county championship. This year, the boys won the conference championship, and the girls won the sectional championship. So first, the boys, come on up. And now we have our sectional central jersey group four champs, our girls' bowling team. Our girls' bowling team, they're excited, they're getting their rings tonight too. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Boris. Mr. Morado, you're in the back, could you please come up to the front? In addition to tremendous athletics in our district, we also have tremendous academic programs. So, each June, we like to recognize our students who have achieved athletically and academically at a state or a national level. So to that end, we have several groups and students that we're going to ask to come up. We're going to start with the model United Nations.
We're actually going to start with business education tonight, just because that's on the top of the list. So our business education program here in Monroe Township features several competitive groups that travel around the state and the nation, engaging in a variety of competitions, role-playings, and written tests. And every year, they seem to one-up themselves with their levels of success, so I'd like to start with DECA, which is directed by Ms. Debbie Stupensky, who's actually here tonight, so I'm going to ask Ms. Stupensky to come up and stand with me if she doesn't mind. I'm sure she does. So all the students who are going to be recognized from DECA finished number one in the state in their respective categories, and we're going to start in the category of marketing communications, and the winner, the number one in the state with the top written test is Sonia Ligenini. In the category of sports and entertainment marketing, for the top written test, we had Neeti Salin. The top role-play award in sports and entertainment marketing was awarded to Neeti Salin and Leanne Top role-play award in the category of buying and merchandising, Manasi Raj and Aman Amir. Top role-play award in accounting, Brian Hilliard. And in the category of marketing management, not only finished top in the state, but also at the national level, Rihanna Doshi. Monroe Township High School DECA program. The next program and students we'd like to recognize is our high school's Future Business Leaders of America organization, which is directed by Ms. Dale, and many of our winners are seniors, so they couldn't be here tonight, but we want to recognize them nonetheless. There's two competitions that we engaged in with FBLA this year, which is called the FBLA Life Smarts Competition. It runs in the fall and in the spring, and it covers categories across all general business comprehension. And this year, Monroe Township High School won both in the fall and the spring, and number one in the state, and our fall competition winners were Pranay Narang and Megna Jain. And in the spring, our winners were Rea Bandaru and Sonia Ligenini. At the FBLA State Leadership Conference, we had one student finish number one in the state in mobile application development, and that student is Faraz Khan. And jumping back to the Life Smarts Competition, we had a group of students that participated in the national bracket, which qualified them for the national competition, they finished number one in the state as well, and this was the team of Riddick Patel, Akalesh Reddy, Abhijit Rigate, Namit Sharma, and Ranish Nair. Congratulations to the Monroe Township High School FBLA. Shifting gears, we will now move over to the performing arts side of things, and we'd like to recognize the students who were selected to All-State Chorus at the Monroe Township High School this year. Our chorus in Monroe Township is directed by Ms. Ariel Klein, and this year, we had seven students selected to All-State Chorus, and we'll start with our All-State Mixed Chorus students, Gabriela Jimenez, Calstub Vedantham, and Antonio Zarco. And our students that were selected to All-State Treble Chorus, Tricia Shingari, Amanda Skuritan, Jessica Skuritan, and Taylor Vayanna. Now we would like to recognize our students from band that have been recognized with some outstanding accolades, and he happens to be here tonight, so I'd like to call up Mr. Alfred Haddinger, our marching band director and assistant band director here at Monroe Township High School. He's also running the sound for you this evening. We have one student that we've called up here once before because she's been recognized to All-State several times, and also region band several times, I believe three times to All-State, and that is Monique Legospi. We'd also like to recognize Manan Bat, who was selected to the Region Two Orchestra. Barun Ragav, who was selected to the Region Two Percussion Ensemble. Nikhil Tangella, also selected to the Region Two Percussion Ensemble. And special recognition to Graham Kozak, who was selected to perform at the US Army National All-American Marching Band down in San Antonio this past winter. Graham Kozak. Congratulations to the band program and Mr. Haddinger. Next up, the FCCLA State Competition and State Champions in categories ranging from culinary arts to family and consumer sciences, early childhood education. We did very well in fashion this year, we're very proud to announce that we had several students in our fashion and design program finish number one in the state in their respective categories, starting with senior Julia Banderas, who finished number one in Fashion Runway for Careers. Winning a gold medal as the number one in the state for Fashion Runway Evening Wear was Rea Honda. In Fashion Runway Sportswear, we had a tie, both Monroe Township High School students in first place in the state, Abigail De Rico and Christina Urbano. In the category of sewing, number one in the state, Amanda Liebowitz. And in early childhood education... And in early childhood education, we had number one in the state for Storybook Ethics, Kristin Velko, Amy Borzak, Lauren Robel, Emma Ferguson, and Riley Wolvan. Congratulations to our students in that area. It is worth noting that the FCCLA is directed by Ms. Pam Valvano and Ms. Amanda Dougherty, both could not be here tonight. But we had one student actually score a perfect score at the state level, number one in the state in the category of accessories, and that is Monica Santiago. So congratulations to our students in the family and consumer science program. Finally, this was not on the initial agenda because we just found out a couple days ago that we had four students from Ms. Maria Nomik's Fine Arts Program selected to go on tour throughout the state with the State Teen Arts 2018-19 Tour, and that is Jessica Skuratton, Simone Gerges, Caroline Albert, and Carmi Remolato. They don't even know they're being recognized tonight because we just found out, but congratulations to those students as well. I don't know if Ms. Casalotto... So next, I would like to turn it over to Ms. Casalotto to speak about Model UN and... I'm sorry. Youth in Government. Thank you.
This evening, we recognize many of our students who are participating or have participated in our Model UN or Youth in Government. Okay. Okay. Youth in Government, Pranav Malapalli. He was the State Program Officer, Youth Advocacy Delegate in Washington, DC. Pranav, great job. Sure. Also Darsh Patel was Premier Statesman, Emergency Response Committee Man. Great job, Pranav. And Megha Jain was Council of National Affairs Delegate. So the talents that they have to demonstrate are leadership, they also have to demonstrate knowledge of specific fields that they have written to, and work collaboratively with others. This is a very high achievement for Youth in Government, so congratulations. All right, we'll move on to Model UN. Students who attend Model UN author bills and legislation, so it really gives them the knowledge of how our government actually operates. And again, it makes them more knowledgeable about global affairs as well as local politics. So we're going to acknowledge. We are acknowledging Pranav again, if you'll come forward. Thank you. He was the Council on National Affairs Delegate and Conference Program Officer. Great. And he was also at Row Kappa. We had the induction last week for our new National Social Studies Honor Society, and I know you were a part of that as well, so congratulations. Ryan Usafi, Council on National Affairs Delegate. And Darsh, voted Premier Country and Council on National Affairs Delegate. Congratulations, gentlemen. Great job.
So that concludes our academic and our athletic awards. Some of our seniors, obviously, were not here tonight, are students, but we are very proud of all the students. When we started this a couple years ago, we didn't have as many in each award, and each year has grown. We could almost recognize every student in the high school for all the achievement that they... for the multiple achievements that students gained during the year. But we did set a standard of county or state recognition or an individual achievement that rose to that level. And as you can see, we're very proud of the number of students that we had up here tonight. Thank you. So speaking of proud, we're not only proud of our students, but we are certainly also proud of the dedicated employees that we have, especially those employees who have provided service to the students and staff of this wonderful township over a number of years. So with that, we would like to call up our retirees for this year. If you don't know who they are, those people smiling, very happy-looking, very relaxed, all right? So we're going to start with Ms. Nancy DiBella from Mill Lake. Next, Ms. Barbara Rosen. Okay, I don't see Barbara coming forward. Ms. Patricia Russo. Ms. Joan Kafka. Next, we have Ms. Beth Goldstein. Next, we have Ms. Linda Calora from Berkeley. Ms. Deborah Stoller. And Ms. Mirna... Mirna Klein from Appleburg. Okay, and then we have a few people who could not make it tonight, but I do want to honor them by at least mentioning their names. We have Ms. Jerry Sullivan from Transportation, Ms. Martha Belmont from Woodland, Ms. Rosalie Litsbartsky from the middle school, Ms. Deborah Scott from the middle school, Mr. Larga Green from the high school, and Ms. Marine Pruzikowski from Transportation. So congratulations to all of our retirees. And that concludes all of the recognition for our retirees and our students.
So again, I'd like to congratulate all of our excellent students that we've had and honored this evening, and they deserve another round of applause from us because of the awesome job that they do, so let's give them another hand. And I would like to congratulate all of our retirees and wish them the best of luck and happiness in their future. And at this time, we are going to number B on the agenda. We will have a end-of-year presentation on district goals by Dr. Kozak.
Patty, you still with us?
Yeah, I'm here.
Beginning of the year, for the school year, in August, I guess, the board met and we developed both board goals and district goals. The district goals are overall goals for... that drive the instruction, that drive our facilities, drive our operations throughout the entire district. And all of the school-based goals really reflect in some aspects, some part of the overall district goals. So I'm going to present to you the presentation on what we call this year our 2017-2018 All Students Achieving Plan. And actually, the board's familiar with this. I may flip it around so the audience can see it.
That's fine.
Within this... So contributors to this report are Dr. Albek, Mr. Gorski, and Mr. Jerry Tagg. Of course, this represents our Board of Education, Mrs. Kathy Kalponovic, our Board President, Mr. Ryback, our Board Vice President, Ms. Michelle Arminio, Ms. Dawn Carino, Mr. Frank Russo, Mr. Mark Braverman, Mr. Paul Ruski, Ms. Jill Demayo, I'm sorry, and Mr. Chiarela. And Ms. Patty Lang, wherever she is virtually.
Right here.
That is... okay. She's attending virtually. This... the district goals again encompass our district vision statement and mission statement. And there are basically four elements to this overall... these overall goals. We wanted to improve student achievement, improve school facilities, increase community involvement, and improve management and operations. So within or under improving student achievement, the first sub-goal there, category, is to continue to develop innovation through real-world and project-based learning. And that is something I put pictures into the program because I thought it better explained, it was better easy to see exactly what our students are doing. So I've shown various pictures where, of course, this ties into our STEM or STEAM initiative, and also the innovation, the innovative types teaching to bring kids to deal with real-world problems, critical thinking, development of communication skills, collaborating, as you can see pictures from students throughout the district on that or involved in that. The next category of that is to explore programs and partnerships to advance STEM initiatives. So we looked at several programs over this past year. Some of them are... I'll have to look at the sheet for this. I know we had Lockheed Martin in there. We had the U.S. National Model STEM Education Program. We had a program through Kane University. There is also other programs that we're looking. We always have the Princeton Plasma Physics Laboratory is an opportunity for students who apply. And we're trying to bring... to bridge that gap between the K-12 education and both the university offerings and the corporate offerings by bringing projects and competitions that our students can compete in and take part in that will give them that experience. We're also utilizing data to continuously improve proficiency in EOA, English Language Arts, Math, and Science. So to that end, Dr. Albek, do you want to join in on some of the bullet points on here on how we use data? Sure.
So along with the information that we get from the park assessments each year, we are also utilizing a program called NWEA MAP, Measures of Academic Performance... yes, Academic Progress. And we're using that through K-8. We started that two years ago. The teachers are utilizing the data so that it's impacting instruction the day after the assessment is complete because teachers are receiving that data that quickly. I know the teachers are using it. When I meet with teachers, they're talking to me about using the data, so it's evident in their lesson plans as they're grouping students. We're also using that information to help us as one of our multiple measures for accelerated math, our tag programs, our basic skills, and the RTI process. So we're really looking at that, using that. The high school didn't have an assessment system. We had started looking at it a couple of years ago, so we actually spent this year identifying what kind of an assessment would work best at our high school level in English and math. And I am happy to report that the English and math departments at the high school will be utilizing the same assessment beginning next year, the MAP assessment. So they'll be able to... we'll have data from students kindergarten through 12th grade to show where their... where their levels are and how we can best utilize that information in the classroom and differentiate our instruction. We're also planning to implement the tool Schoology to begin implementation next year, specifically grades nine through 12, but eventually moving it district-wide. It's going to take some time to implement, but it's one of the needs that we heard from parents about needing one place to go for information on what their children are learning. So we've listened to what the parents said, we looked at several different learning management platforms, and this is the one that the district is going to be moving toward, and we're going to start training our staff members. Half of the high school staff will be trained in this next year, and then half the following year.
As Dr. Albek stated, we want to use the data really more for our purposes. We want to make sure all the students... We want to make sure are the students learning? And we look at the students both individually and collectively. We want to make sure is each student, we meet that student at where he or she is at academically, and we want to see that they're advancing to where we expect them to advance. And we have models of where we expect them to advance. We have national models based on the data that's available that says this is the expected rate of growth. And in New Jersey, our students perform higher than most of the states. Massachusetts and New Jersey, the students generally perform higher. So we take that into account, and we're always looking to see, can we move our students even beyond what the expected rate of growth is? Because we really do want to prepare them for a global society and a very, very competitive college/university environment. And I'm happy to report, although we don't have the results of the PARC testing from this year, nor the MAP test, we're still waiting for the results for that, I am happy to report that when we looked at an analysis of our PARC scores for the last three years, so last year, the year before, and the year before that, we have seen a steady increase, a growth in our student scores. That is attributed, of course, to our wonderful teachers who were in there really at the ground floor. They're the people that are in there working with your children every single day. But we use that data that we talked about at our leadership team meetings. All of our principals set their goals based on data on student growth, at least one or more of their goals is set on student growth. And you can see the result of that, although it's hard to see on that graph, that overall from Monroe Township, we have the, there are three columns there representing the three different years, 14, 15, 15, 16, and 16, 17. So the very first three columns on the left represent Monroe Township, where it has grown, and that is in EOA. Our district factor groups, which are schools that are grouped like us by socioeconomic means, we are above those groups. Similarly-sized districts throughout the states, we scored higher than those districts. And in Middlesex County, the overall, and in some grades, some districts have scored higher, but our overall average scores are higher than the other districts in Middlesex County, and that also includes the state. We have the same comparison in math, and it's the same categories. So if you look at this again, the first three columns are Monroe Township for the past three years. Districts like us socio-economically, similar-sized districts, districts in Middlesex County, and districts in the state. And these are the overall from grades three through 11 for the PARC scores. We also have other indicators. U.S. News &amp; World Report ranked Monroe Township High School 57th in New Jersey this year. So that reflects the ongoing work that we're doing to use that data on an ongoing basis to look to improve the delivery of instruction, our offerings, to ensure that each and every one of our students is meeting each of their, or his or her, goals that we're setting for them. And we want to make that a continual ascension with test scores and with their understanding of material. We're not just interested in the academic performance. Dr. Albic referred to this a little earlier. We put together several committees this year, and the end result was the name was called the Whole Child Committee. And that really reflects what we're looking at, at overall mental, emotional health, behavioral health for our students, starting in the youngest grades all the way up through high school. We know from surveys, we know from looking at data, looking at records, that we have students that have expressed a lot of stress. We have students we know that are maybe exhibiting signs of depression, or we're aware that we want to look to identify that. We're looking for ways to help students deal with stress. So we looked at programs such as mindfulness, yoga, other types of activities that our students can be involved in, our character education programs, to really help students develop an overall awareness and an appreciation for living a healthy lifestyle. So some of the slides following are some of the pictures, and I couldn't even fit, I could have fit, but I have even more pictures that we have recently from some of this. There we are. Okay, so here are some of the pictures from our students participating in some of these activities, some of the programs that we have at our, that was at our middle school. I missed that one picture. But we did, I know I just recently got a number of pictures from Woodland School and other schools at the end-of-year activities where our students are engaged in various activities. And we're hoping to continue this from kindergarten through 12th grade to really teach our students how to deal with stress, how to live a healthy and happy lifestyle, and give them the tools to be successful with that. Another goal for us was to improve school facilities. That is the installation, the construction of 10 temporary classroom units or trailers at the middle school. So if you look up here at the goals, when we started the year off, we had yellow stickers next to all the different points, meaning that that was the beginning for us, that's where we were starting. And now we're looking at and saying, how have we progressed? So the green goals represent that we're on target, we may not have achieved it, but we're, it's a continuing initiative. So they are the areas that I've gone over with you. Now we're up to the best facilities. It's yellow because the trailers aren't actually in place yet. They will be in place before September. They've been ordered, all the plans have been placed, so it's somewhat achieved, but trying to keep it that they're not physically at the middle school yet, but they are on the way. There's been a lot of research into that. And there's a graph that you can see of the classroom, temporary classroom units. The next was the development of land, which was donated by Monroe Township to be used for expanded school bus parking. And again, in progress. A lot of work has been done by Mr. Tagg with this regard in particular, and there's a lot of work that has to be, still be done. But across some central office and where the transportation area is, the township has donated land for us to develop. We have to clear the trees out of there and put a parking lot, so that is a work that'll take some time, but it has certainly been in progress. And that is a picture of what that'll be or where that is. The next is a continuation of the District Capital Improvement Plan. There have been a number of initiatives and projects that have taken place throughout the district. So on October 12th, the Department of Education completed its review of the proposed amendment to the Improved Long Range Facilities Plan submitted by the Board of Education pursuant to the Educational Facilities Construction and Financing Act. And basically, the department has approved the board's submission, and the approved long-range facility plan amendment fulfills all of our reporting requirements for a period of five years from the date of this letter unless the long-range facilities plan needs further attention or amendments to address a proposed school facilities project that is inconsistent. The board will amend the plan to reflect any changes that may occur within the next five years. As you can see, we try to make these goals as comprehensive as possible. The next was an application for safety grants to fund specific safety improvement projects. In 2017, the board applied to the New Jersey Schools Insurance Group Safety Grant Program for a safety grant, and the district was awarded a grant in the amount of $31,272.81, which was used toward a playground surfacing project at Mill Lake School. The board will apply for the same grant in 2018. That's a picture of the playground project, or the playground, I should say. The next goal under that was to develop and present a referendum which will satisfy the needs of a growing student body. Thank you. And certainly, we did present, develop, and present the referendum. Unfortunately, it did not pass on March 13th, but that work is in progress. It was presented. We had multiple presentations. This is a list of just some of the presentations that were offered during that time. Next was to increase community involvement. That was to broaden parent community engagement and communication. There are several ways that we look to address that this year. Monroe News, which is the mayor's newsletter that reaches all community members and features generally about four pages of coverage of the school news. We had a referendum newsletter, an actual paper newsletter, was sent to all community members. We increased media coverage of student events in Monroe Now, which is a newer online news publication in the Home News Tribune. We increased communication with parent participation at the special education parent advisory meetings. We have, of course, continued the Falcon Flyer and Falcon Express. We had a new app for the district. And we were able this year for the first time to post articles in our adult communities, our senior citizen communities, about 10 of the communities, that we were able to put school news into those communities. To engage the community in discussions regarding the need and importance of passing a referendum. Numerous ways. We had referendum videos. We had presentations at adult communities, at community and school events, presentations at schools, presentations at the Township Library, presentation at the community center. We used the Channel 28 or the Verizon TV channels. And then we had Facebook and Facebook Live, with one of the presentations actually hitting 2.9,000 views of the referendum presentation. So we were looking at every possible way to increase our communication to the community. We wanted to collaborate with community stakeholders in implementing the next phase of the one-to-one technology integration at the high school. So that's an outline of basically when we formed a committee, we invited parents and community members in to talk about our iPad initiative. We submitted surveys. We brought, we were able to secure two of the companies out of the four original companies to give us pilots, to give us equipment to pilot for a month. The students had a chance to pilot it, the staff had a chance to pilot it. They came in and presented in the commons at the high school one day. And basically, the outcome of that was that continuation has occurred. The board did approve the purchase or the renewal of the iPads again for next year. Next area is improved management and operations. Mr. Gorski, you want to speak to the areas in this section?
Yes, sir. First and most of importance is the Ad-Hoc Committee for Fair Funding. Dr. Kozak and myself contributed to the chair, can chair all's fair funding committee. We also provided testimony throughout the year to put our district at the forefront of consideration for distribution of aid. There's a new development with this now with Senate Bill Number Two that everybody should take a look at because we've advocated for that before. I'm getting a little off-script, but that gets rid of the growth limits on the budget and also phases out adequacy aid, which would give the Monroe Board of Ed approximately $5 to $6 million more state aid. That's material, so keep an eye out on Senator Sweeney's Senate Bill Number Two. Discussions are continuing with superintendents from other unfunded school districts in New Jersey. We had a meeting recently with Mrs. Arminio, Mrs. Kalponovic, Mr. Ryback, and Mrs. Lang with representatives from New Jersey school boards, where we hosted a forum on underfunded districts, and they went through and provided a lot of good information and some initiatives that we may be looking at and studying in the future to put pressure on the legislators to get us more state aid. Now we're on the 1819 school budget, which provides for 300 to 500 additional students for curriculum, addresses aging school facilities, adds new quality staff required for growth while staying within the tax levy cap and without using the bank cap. We're strategically holding the bank cap for next year. The 1819 budget was approved by the County Office of Education. The budget met all the needs of the additional students, including temporary classroom trailers, additional capital projects, new textbooks, continuation of the one-to-one tablet initiative, about 35 additional staff, about nine buses and a van, and trailers while staying within cap and not, again, not using the bank cap. The Board of Education continues to pursue spending efficiency and best fiscal practices promoted throughout the district. District administration is continuing its use of fiscally prudent strategies. Negotiations with insurance carriers resulted in significant savings. Health insurance was about $1.3 million in savings from the initial proposal, and by participating in joint insurance funds, the district has information from our broker where we saved $1.4 million, most of which was in the area of workers' comp as opposed to if we went out and got private insurance. Budget defense rounds indicated that school principals and supervisors are continuing to utilize best fiscal practices with their zero-based budgets. The PTOs and the PTA's continue to supplement programs outside of the budget with services for students and staff. Monroe Township Education Foundation awarded numerous teacher grants, and MTEA awarded grants highlighting various educational activities.
Okay, so that concludes the report on the district goals. As I stated before, I try to make that as, we all try to make that as comprehensive as possible to address all aspects of the district. There's a lot, really, to running a district. There's the academics, of course, the finances, the facilities, and certainly addressing student and staff needs. So with that, are there any questions from the Board of Education?
I would like to make a comment, though.
Sure.
Dr. Kozak, it seems that things are positive in your report, and that the goals have primarily been met, and some of them are continuing. And also, so we see continuum of improvement, and of course, the community has supported you. So I thank you for all your efforts. So here is the conundrum. You've succeeded pretty well, it seems to me, and yet you have received a previously mentioned letter without the consent of the board. So again, I have a conundrum. Most of the community would like to see you stay, and I thank you for all the hard work and like to see you continue to improve our district. Just a comment.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Arminio. Any other questions, comments, jokes? Okay, seeing none, thank you very much for the presentation.
Okay, so while we're waiting for Dr. Kozak to take his seat, we will go to the Student Board Members' Report.
At the end of June, FBLA students will attend the National Conference at Baltimore. Also, a few students will be attending the American Legion Boys and Girls Civic Leadership Program. The high school held a blood drive on June 5th. And lastly, on behalf of all students, I would like to thank the staff for a wonderful school year.
Thank you. Our senior member, Student Board Member, could not be with us tonight. It's a busy time of year for seniors, and they do the best they can to meet all of their obligations. But I'd like to congratulate Stephanie Scalisi on her two years of service to the Board of Education. She was a member of the AVID program. She was an advanced Italian language program and inducted into the Italian Honor Society. She was a member of the Student Council and the Poet Society. She has volunteered in the community to raise money and run food drives for those in need. And we do have a plaque for her, which we will forward to her, and we want to wish her the best of luck in her
her the best of luck in her college years and on. So congratulations to Stephanie. So at this time, we'll go to committee reports, if there's any committees that wish to report this evening. Mr. Mayo?
We had a curriculum committee meeting tonight. We, wait a minute. I misplaced my notes. We reviewed one curriculum document, the Functional Social Studies and World Cultures. This document is for, this curriculum's for the self-contained population and it introduces them into geography, world language, and economics in a functional way that will help them manage the world outside. We also had an update on the homework policy. As you all know, this started in November, where it was recommended we review the current homework policy. In December, Dr. Alvich reached out to the staff and asked them to become part of the homework committee. They had their first committee meeting in January 17th. The committee was divided into three subgroups. There was the research, the research portion, where they would gather and analyze current research on homework practices. There was the Policies and Regulations Subcommittee that reviewed current policy, the current policy and regulation, and then looked at other districts' homework policies. And then there was the survey section, where they sent surveys out to parents, student, and staff to get feedback from those groups, the groups that are directly affected by the homework practices. In February, they, the subcommunities got together and completed all their tasks. In March, the surveys were sent out and they had a pretty good response. 216 of the staff members responded to the survey, 633 elementary parents. The middle school parents, 355 answered the survey, and the high school, 297 parents answered, as well as many students. April, there was a third committee meeting. They reviewed the results. Everyone received the responses from the surveys and Dory read all of the responses where people put their own comments in, and the committee could read as many as they wanted also. And then they provided input on the current homework policy. And they came out with a, oh, and the committee was comprised of every grade level teacher, administration, guidance, and had about 30, 30 members on it giving input into the homework policy. So it was really, it was really well done. And what they did is they went off the current homework policy, but the proposed policy has a few changes to it. Some of the new parts of the homework policy is that homework and long-term projects are discouraged during breaks, which are defined as Thanksgiving, winter, and recess. This doesn't mean there won't be homework during those breaks, but what they've also done is they've also defined, defined what that means. And I'm going to take a step back. They felt that through the studies, that homework adds value to a student's learning when the homework is evaluated by the teacher and the student gets the homework back with feedback right away so that they could correct mistakes and learn where they went wrong. And then they, the other change is they defined homework breaks and they talked about at each grade level, the elementary, the K to five, what that means, how homework won't be given over breaks. For example, in the K to five, homework and projects will not be, will not be assigned over defined breaks with the exception of makeup work. If a long-term project is assigned, it must be assigned at least three days before a break and cannot be due until the third school day after a break. And summative assessments cannot be given until the third day upon the return from a break. There is no expectation for work to be done during the break. So they're giving students extra time on either side of a break to complete homework so that they don't have to do it during the break. They also define this for the middle school in a similar way. Long-term assignments due after winter break and spring break shall either be assigned a minimum of three periods prior to the break and be a minimum of three periods after the break to give students extra time to do that. For classes that follow the AB schedule, any long-term assignment due after the winter and spring break shall either be assigned a minimum of two periods prior to the break and be due two periods after the break. So the kids can work during break, but they're given opportunities to work outside a break if they have other plans. And in the high school, due to block scheduling at the high school, any assignment due after the winter and spring break shall either be assigned a minimum of two blocks prior to the break or be due a minimum of two blocks after the break. And the policy also has given a checklist for teachers, which the teachers really liked. Got very positive feedback on that. So we're looking to get that on to the policy committee in July and then for a first read at the July meeting and a second read, so it can be in August, so it can be implemented in September.
Mr. Chiarella?
Who's going to police this? This is a lot of rules. I mean, you're going to, what happened, and then what happens to the teacher who doesn't, who violates and they go two days out right before a third holiday, but five days out before a second holiday?
Well, there's not meant to be, there's not meant to be penalizing teachers for not following the policy.
Well, we have policies, so you have to, you have to implement them.
Can I suggest something?
Mr. Russo?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I would suggest the first homework assignment be to study those rules, because I was completely lost. I mean, it's like there's so much there.
Michelle?
Okay. Ms. Arminio?
It has not gone in front of the policy committee yet, so these are suggestions. I take it from the committee, from your curriculum committee.
These are proposed, yes. And then it's going to go to policy.
So it has to go into the policy committee for review as well.
I would, I would just say if it goes before policy, then we probably should have a homework calendar so parents know how to follow it also, because I, with my kids, I'd like to know if they're, if they're getting too much homework or now they're, if their teachers are in violation of some policy that we created. You know, just like cookies. We, you know, cookies are banned and now we're going to have, you know, we should have a whole set calendar for parents so they know what's banned, what's not banned, what teachers can do and what they can't do, when they can do it, when they can't do it, bathroom breaks, when they can breathe. We should just have it all calendarized for them and for the parents, too. This way they'll make it really easy.
I'm sure it would be part of the opening handbook to start the new year, if we can get this approved by September. Be one of the things added to the student handbook in September.
Well, it may be confusing, but I think the premise behind the policy and the work behind the policy is that the teachers put a lot of effort into this and there was a lot of buy-in from the teachers and a lot of positive comments from the teachers. And, you know, there was definitely teachers who wanted, you know, who felt that they needed to be able to give homework on breaks, but there was, this was as a result of a compromise and I think the product of the work is supported by the teachers.
Dr. Alvich, would you like to add to Mr. Mayo?
So this entire process was led by the teachers. So I brought it to the teachers. The teachers did all of this work. They're the ones who are proposing this. The next steps after a policy and a regulation, if they're approved, would be for the building administrators now to go back and work with their teachers to identify more specific pieces, exactly what you're saying. That's not something we would put in a policy or a regulation. That would be something that would go into a student handbook and that would be the job of the building administration, working with teachers. And we would have to do that even at the elementary level as the three upper elementary land, the three lower elementary. So there were administrators on this committee. There were assistant principals, principals, supervisors, but there were also teachers from every grade level, from every subject area, child study team members, guidance counselors, and we made sure that there were representatives from every school except Barkley Brook. They were the only ones I didn't get a volunteer from, but we made sure that there were people there from all areas of the district and it was really led by the teachers.
Okay. I appreciate, I would just, I would just like to say one, one follow-up on that. It's just that we have a lot of parents and children who are looking for more homework. They even go and get, they get tutoring, they go to, you know, various schools outside of our school just to, just to get more rigor or more, you know, just more exposure to the things that they're looking for. And I, and I think that, I just, I just think that we, I would just caution this, caution everyone that we're in, we're in school. So it's not, we shouldn't be looking to make this an easier, you know, we want to compete with the world on the world stage and we want to get our kids into the best schools. I don't necessarily think that.
Don't clap yet. Excuse me, I was in a meeting. You're, you're going way off track here. This in no way, shape, or form says reduces the amount of homework. It just structures the homework, makes sure the homework is productive.
Well, excuse me, because, because I was talking, right? But I remember a board member here, sitting here, Ms. Mayo, who brought it up to the, to the board and said that she was upset that her child had homework on a, on a family trip that they took. That was the impetus for this whole thing. So we have a board member and we have administration that are going to our teachers and telling them, "You don't like homework, right?" And then the teachers are coming back going, "Yeah, we don't like homework. This is what we're going to do." That's what I'm reading here for this whole thing.
That's not what happened at all. It was, this was all, all done by the teachers. There was no influence. I mean, they did all the research. They, they completely have a buy-in on this and they made the decision about what they felt was right for the schools.
Mr. Ryback?
I'd just like to clarify a point. I'm sure you'll agree, Ms. Chiarella, but I just want to touch on it. Rigor does not necessarily refer to how many homework assignments, but the kind of homework assignment it is. And I think that one of the things that we're, in school systems in general, trying to do is tailor homework assignments for the individual student. So, you know, when you look at rigor, you don't have to look at quantity. It's the quality of the assignments that we're talking about.
And that was a major thing that the teachers brought to the thing, what makes good homework and how does good homework produce better results? And they looked at that research and that's what they helped geared the policy about, too.
Well, there's no policy yet.
The proposed policy. We have, we have, no, because we already, we do currently have a homework policy.
We do currently have a homework policy. But, so the, the, the part of this was looking at how to give homework and what does it mean to give homework that does produce better results rather than just giving more homework.
Ms. Arminio?
Okay, since I had requested to be a part of at least some of the information going into this revised policy and I was not invited, I would like to, if you present, if, who's going to present it to the policy committee? Is someone going to represent and present it to the policy committee?
Yeah, I had actually asked to have it on the policy committee for last week, but there was no room on the agenda.
That's correct.
So I have, I have no problem coming to, to the next policy committee and presenting the exact same thing that I just presented to curriculum.
I request all the documentation, all the surveys.
It's already in, it's in the confidential. Everything is there already.
Okay.
Okay.
So the report and the summary and evaluation of the, okay.
And any other committees? Mr. Ryback?
Personnel. I know Dr. Kozak had mentioned in our meeting that the district is working hard on filling the job openings for next school year. And also, we reviewed and are recommending updates to the wording of contracts for the coordinator of student transportation, transportation secretary, and transportation dispatcher. And lastly, we're recommending for your consideration tonight, contracts for assistant superintendent, business administrator, and board attorney. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Arminio?
Okay, the policy that we did, we do have a lot of policies that getting backed up because we've had very important policies to review. The policy that we did get through, and I think it was about 18 pages, was the procurement procedures for school nutrition programs. It's Policy 8561. We have directives from the federal government and there are quite a lot of
Mandates?
Procure, well, it's not really, it doesn't say it's a mandate on this policy, but they are directives from the federal government as to how to proceed, as to how to keep records. And there are a lot of things involved in this policy that we did go through. So again, that's Policy 8561. We also continued our discussion on the school security policies. We just had a discussion. We did not make any changes. Since I went to the June 1st, 2018, New Jersey School Boards, School Board Seminar on this, I'm just going to read some of the things as a summary of what they discussed. First of all, let me just make sure I have it. Okay. The New Jersey School Board's School Security and Student Safety Conference was conducted on June 1st. I attended along with Mr. Piero, our Director of Security, and Ms. Lang, one of our, of course, our board member. The big thing that I took away from, from the full-day conference was that they continually suggested reevaluating and reassessing our school security programs and, and again, never-ending reviews and reassessment of these programs and our policies. We were, we had a lecturer and speaker from the New Jersey School Boards and they told us that they're, and we were, some of us in, on the board were aware of it. I put out a flyer at one of the committee meetings. There is, and I don't know if it's open to the public, but it may be. It's a 2014 New Jersey School Board Study and it was about what makes schools safe. They also talked about the role of training. Training was a big thing for the whole conference, training our staff, training our security personnel, training students. So training was very, very important. We also heard from the U.S. Department of Homeland Security. They had a speaker there. This would be something that we should look into. They have something called EDGE. It's a virtual training tool. It's free to all schools. They showed us a couple samples of what it looked like. Again, it would be something that we could bring into the school by committee and take a look at it and see if we can utilize it. But it's free to schools. It's called a virtual training environment for schools. They also suggested a security audit, which I think members, some of the members of the policy committee would like to see. We can delve into what that means down the road. We're still doing, again, this is a very dynamic issue. It's very concerning to everyone and it's something that should be continually reviewed and looked at and discussed. And finally, let's see. The last speaker was from the Department of Education, the New Jersey State Department of Education. Some of the practical things that they talked about was clearly marked entrances in a school. They talked about the new construction requirements mandated by the state, which I think we're going to have to be very, very cognizant of since we need new schools. They talked about how to protect our vestibules in the entrances and all the architectural designs regarding our new, our future new construction. So that we're going to have to get up to date with. I'm sure our facilities and our buildings and grounds will know about all the state mandates, but they are for the protection and security of the physical building. They also mentioned, this was again repeated many times, take training seriously. And again, training, 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 drills, development, all kinds of things. Again, it was training and repetitiveness and review. Again, take training seriously. Do not, and one of the suggestions was do not announce drills. The best practices for drill procedures were conduct drills but don't announce them because people get complacent, they stop really, you know, acting in the proper way. So, so that's going to be something that's going to have to be discussed with the administration and the security department. So after you conduct the grill, conduct the drills, you're supposed to debrief. So there's an ongoing debriefing from the administration and security. And then it also talks about providing feedback to staff, what works and what did not. If something fails in a drill, it's not a negative, it's a learning experience. So providing feedback to staff and working with staff and finding out what didn't happen is going to be a critical, critical for us to have safe schools. And then finally, announcing a lockdown, just use plain language. And I can, I can have a discussion with Mr. Piero if he And I can, I can have a discussion with Mr. Piero if he chooses to maybe refine our policies to talk about. The thing that I really went there for, because it was such a discussion in the policy committees, was the use of weapons in our schools with our security. And that was really, it astonished me that it was not discussed at great length. So I went there to try to get a handle on the use of lethal force, and yet, that was really not something that they addressed all that much. So I'm still pursuing, you know, that kind of thing, because I think, again, it should be part of our discussion. All right? That was, that was a full day. And finally, we did have another discussion item, again, no policy revisions at this point, but the committee talked about outside activities with people, you know, our staff members employed on the outside as well, and also conflicts of interest. So we're, that's an ongoing, and we're working on those policies as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have a report? Mr. Ruski?
Finance?
Finance? Okay.
All right. Quite a few things we went over at the finance meeting. So, we'll start with, we are entering into the Huntington County Educational Services Commission Cooperative. And this is a pricing agreement received by the Transportation Director, Kathleen McDonald. This, as a co-op, we participate in several co-ops and consortiums, which allow us to get some better prices, and in this case, sorry. In this case, lost my train of thought there. This allows to identify, or she did identify a specific style of vans being offered through this Huntington County Commission, which are actually less expensive and are of a superior quality. So that's our hook for joining this extra consortium, and it's better than what we currently are offered through Middlesex County Consortium. There's no fee to join, it just gives us an extra option of where to look when we're purchasing some new equipment. That was good. This is interesting. So, all buses are going to be fitted with EZ Pass going forward. And that's going to, what's great about that is it allows us to get rid of petty cash, which, you know, there's a lot of flaws in petty cash systems. So this will improve internal controls. The only reason we were staying with cash was because EZ Pass wouldn't accept, they only accepted credit cards, they would not accept purchase orders, which they now do accept. So that's a good thing. It's going to allow us to change, and as anybody who has EZ Pass knows, when you use them, you can save anywhere from 15% to 20% on each toll. So that's money well spent, and that'll be savings to the district. We are entering into a five-year lease purchase agreement for all the equipment budgeted in this next year's budget. That, that again, allows us to extend out, instead of paying for everything in full upfront, it allows us to stretch the payments out over five years, which actually, for the most part, nicely coincides with the depreciation schedule on much of that equipment. So that, too, is a good practice. Food service management, so our RFP, we went out and we got one bid back. Coincidentally, it's with Mets Culinary Management, which we currently use, which actually is fine, because everything we've seen and experienced from Mets, we have high lunch participation rates, they do a wonderful farm-to-table initiative, which is enjoyed by all. And I love this word. There, for this year, and tell me if I'm wrong, but there's a guarantee of a $95,000 profit at least.
Madam?
Yes.
Yes. There's a guaranteed profit in the proposal from Mets of approximately $95,000 pre-depreciation.
Before depreciation, right.
Yeah, and that's important, because this proprietary program is unique in that it is designed to break even every year. It's federally and state-funded, and they feel if you're generating a profit in the cafeteria fund, you're charging too much for lunch, or you could perhaps improve the quality of the food.
All right, easy, easy. Don't steal the rest of my thunder. I just wanted you to confirm the $95,000 guaranteed profit.
Confirm.
Okay, thank you. So now, on to that part. So the good news is, is when we do have these profits, and we did grow the food service profit to a level that exceeds what we're allowed to keep on hand, so as Mr. Gorsky was just so eloquently saying, you have three choices. You can improve quality, which right now is impossible, because we're at a very high level already. You can reduce lunch prices, which doesn't work for us, because they just made us raise lunch prices 10 cents. Or, third, but, and best option is to invest in capital upgrades, which is what we're looking to do. So roughly $200,000 will be put to good use, replacing existing equipment, which was actually purchased with a 1999 bond referendum money, and has clearly been, gone beyond its useful life. So, when you could put all that together, good quality, where you get good profits, and you could then upgrade your equipment, that really all comes together very nicely. So that concludes the initial part of my finance report. If I may, can I add one more thing on top of the?
Sure, you can.
On top? So now, this is the fun part for me, and this is where I get to be a little extra happy, on top of the normal amount of happy. So, as the Jamesburg representative, I'm definitely proud to say that our administration, over the last couple of years, has done an excellent job. They've updated curriculum successfully, and continue to do that across the district. Coming back from the cuts that we suffered nine years ago, we've now officially brought back sports, plays, this year, National Junior Honor Society, the band is coming back next year, so we're back to now full strength going forward. And that's been a lot of work in progress, but it's great to have that accomplishment. And I say all that, leading up to the final part of that, is our BA has done an excellent job budgeting. And he was able to squeeze out, before closing out this year, a nice amount to add to what we already did with the Jamesburg tuition for attendance. So, we have a check here that I'm going to ask, that I give it to Mr. Gorsky, for $100,000 to be used to, towards the attendance arrears.
Oh, that's great, because that really shows, that, first, congratulations to Jamesburg, because I know how hard it's been for you guys to deal with all the cuts and with all your students and everything. But it shows that the agreement between Jamesburg and Monroe, that we fought so long to get a one that would work, is working. And it's good for both Monroe and Jamesburg. So congratulations to your BA and your Board of Education. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And we appreciate all the, the understanding that was built into that agreement and the time. And it, again, as we talked about when we did the budget, it's turned nicely small, but it turned where we chipped away $22,000 initially, but that just wasn't enough. And so, as, again, as we worked the budget and we massaged things, and we were able to put off some projects to the next calendar year, we were able to have this amount of money available to hand over now. So if I may, I'd like to add this into tonight's, make a motion, if I may.
Okay.
All right. So, I move that the members of the Monroe Township Board of Education approve and accept the $100,000 installment payment, and direct the business administrator to apply said payment against the outstanding tuition arrears from Jamesburg schools to the Monroe Township Board of Education.
Second by Mr. Ryback?
So, this is all, so on camera, $100,000 check.
Yay. What about that big one?
I thought about it, I didn't want to.
Confirm.
Okay.
Made out to Monroe Township.
Any comments or questions, Ms. Arminio?
Yes, Mr. Ruski, thank you so very much for all your hard work, and thanks to the people of Jamesburg, and we really appreciate it. And I'm glad that things are looking up for them as well. And as welcome as all their, you know, your students are, we appreciate the installment payment. So, thanks to the board, thanks to your business administrator, but thanks to the residents of Jamesburg.
All right.
And thanks to them for sending their children to us.
We're happy to do it, and thanks for having us.
Oh, I, can I, oh, I'm sorry, no, no.
Anyone else? Mr. Russo?
Let's thanks Fair Funding. There you go.
I can't check on my phone to send, but I'll check when I get home.
Okay, is, this would be a roll call, so if there's no more questions, we'll have a roll call.
Mrs. Arminio?
Yes.
Mr. Braverman?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mrs. D'Mayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lang?
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Carino?
Yes.
Mr. Ryback?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Here, yes.
Mr. Ruski?
Yes.
And Mrs. Koloponowicz?
Yes.
Madam Board President, I'm pleased to announce that motion to accept $100,000 installment payment from Jamesburg has unanimously passed.
Wow, thank you very much again.
I have a question on something else. On the Mets, Mets food service, if we accumulate other funds, will they be able to be used for new construction kitchens for the, in the new, in the new schools? Or they have to be capital improvement from existing facilities?
I think so, but I would defer to Mike.
Yes. Fortunately, we did talk about that at Finance Committee, and I appreciate you bringing it up. The question is, can retained earnings in the cafeteria fund, in terms of cash, that runs into a problem when it exceeds a few months of expenditures, can that be used to offset a future referendum's kitchen outfitting of equipment? And the answer to that is yes. You can, you can offset some of the costs of a new referendum by procuring the equipment and, from the cafeteria fund, and in lieu of bonding.
But we can't, from year to year, accumulate that fund, that money, is that it? Like, let's say it's going to take us four or five years to build a new school, can we accumulate those funds over that period, or do we have to utilize it on an annual basis?
Unfortunately, you have to watch the balance of cash in the cafeteria fund carefully, because if it exceeds the state limit, you could run into an audit recommendation. So there's no reservation of the fund on the balance sheet for that purpose. But, you know, we should still be able to
Do something.
Make a contribution towards that goal.
Okay, thank you. And, I'm sorry, it would have to be used specifically for cafeteria equipment?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Any more committee reports, I think we're still looking at? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to the public forum. Anyone from the public wishing to speak to the agenda, please come to the microphone and give your name and address for the record.
Anthony Preziosi, O8 Equestrian Way. Everybody here heard tonight, look how well we're doing with scores going up, our rankings have been going up, and some board members still want to get rid of Dr. Kozak. Doesn't make sense. Okay. Kathy, was Dr. Kozak notified that he was not getting renewed for his contract?
I said in the past few meetings, I will not speak to.
Well, you mentioned it before, you said, yes, you did.
I will not be speaking anymore about Dr. Kozak's contract.
How many board members received a notice that his contract was not renewed before it was presented to him? Could you raise your hand, anybody? Did you get that notice? All of you's got that notice, huh? Okay, you know, Kathy, you spend the taxpayers' money like it's water. You know what's going to happen here. It's going to cost us over half a million dollars to replace somebody whose scores have gone up, whose ranking, rankings have gone up, who, I received a letter from teachers. Last week, I mentioned, why aren't the teachers here to support him? They're afraid to support him because of retribution. Many of them are supporting him. There's so many people supporting him, and you still want to get rid of him. I don't understand it. It's, it gets to me. I keep on saying, maybe you want somebody that you want as a superintendent? I've mentioned that before. It's really a shame what's happening here. It's just a bad deal, and you're going to cost the taxpayers over $600,000.
Betty Sabarito, 2 Barrymore Drive. I wanted to speak also to the superintendent's contract. I'd actually like to read a copy of the letter, because it was sitting near the agenda. It says, "Dear Monroe Township Board of Education members, I'm going to assume all of you received this. In conversation with colleagues, the subject of Dr. Kozak's employment and the recent dissent among the Board of Education members came up, and I felt compelled to write. We felt you should be aware that the vast majority of us support Dr. Kozak and believe he is good for the district. He is present in buildings, he knows a good many of our names, and shows real compassion and caring for what we do in the district, much more so than we could have ever said about Dr. Hamilton. We also believe that he is being pushed out of the district, not because of his job performance, but because of a personal vendetta against him by Kathy Koloponowicz and Michael Gorski. We also believe that Anthony Preziosi was correct in his assertion that the reason Dr. Kozak is being pushed out is so that Dory Alva can be given the position. It did not go unnoticed that the posting for the interim superintendent position contained words "central office experience," so she could be given priority over any of the other district employees holding supervisory certificates. We also wonder how much better the district could be under Dr. Kozak's leadership if he wasn't thwarted at every turn. Anyone seeking proof of the collusion to get rid of Dr. Kozak need look no further than the posted text messages between Mr. Gorski and Chrissy Skirby. It was eye-opening to see that on more than one occasion, there were, there was a concerted effort to get rid of district employees, including Hamilton, Sharon Biggs, Dana Walker, et cetera. The reference to Dr. Kozak as goofy to a parent was unethical and disgusting. It was also upsetting to become aware that according to Mr. Gorski, KK listens to me, implying that he is the boss. Shouldn't it be the other way around? As if the above is not enough to cause concern, Kathy Koloponowicz, sending a letter to Dr. Kozak, informing him his contract would not be renewed after a board meeting with no vote by the board members, also did not go unnoticed. What happened to the decision to offer him a contract within 10 days of him extending his forced resignation? Is this district a dictatorship? Isn't the purpose of the board to ensure a vote? Since Ms. Koloponowicz was so inclined to act personally to send him a letter, I hope she is prepared to be sued personally for the cost of a new superintendent's search, and any money Dr. Kozak may receive from a lawsuit, he should pursue. I'm sure the taxpayers of Monroe will be happy to undo costs incurred due to the dictatorial ways. You will notice that this letter goes unsigned. I wish I was brave enough to sign it. However, I am afraid of being the next person to be forced out of a job due to the lack of moral and ethics associated on this board. I fear that if, some, I fear that if both are not replaced, all in this district will be afraid of letting their opinions known. A school district is no place for backdoor dealings and backstabbing. We are looking to you, the board members, to do the right thing and begin the process of replacing both Koloponowicz and Mr. Gorski. If any of you would like to read this letter at a board meeting, please do. Sincerely concerned district employees." I want to know if the board has any response to this letter, and I know you're going to say you can't speak to it because it's a personnel matter, so I'm going to ask Dr. Kozak, since the personnel matter involves you, would you give the authority for them to speak? And would you release that letter so that we can get everybody and everything out in the open, and start to speak about why it is you're being replaced? This district is in no position now, we have no money to look for a superintendent, this man is doing an incredible job, look at the statistics. You fired him, or let him go, or whatever you want to call it, before his evaluation, which makes no sense. The district is in a mess. I want to commend you, Ms. Arminio, for always listening to the public, that I really wish some of the rest of you would do. This is not your personal business. You are working for us, you've been elected by us, you're paid by us. So, Dr. Kozak, if you would release that, that would be great, so that maybe we can get the ball rolling, and we can start figuring out what it is we need to do to keep this man here, which the public has come up and spoken about, meeting after meeting.
Anyone else from the public?
Just as a comment to, as far as, I mean, I waive the right, if board members wanted to respond, they certainly can.
It would be a breach of confidentiality, should the board members say anything at this time due to pending legal matters.
When, my time can start now. Prakash Parup, 33, Denard Drive. Dr. Kozak, excellent performance, and I feel very sorry that you are being pushed away. From last June 7 meeting, you president of PUE indicated that you submitted statutory notice to Dr. Kozak on March 27 with consultation with notice to Dr. Kozak on March 27 with consultation with County Superintendent and NJ Education Department. You, the President of BOE, did not provide information to BOE member Michelle Arminio when she requested by email details of your dialogue with county and state authority. This shows that you're not even transparent to BOE members. You are acting on your own and keeping public also in dark, taking shelter under district attorney. We also understand from June 7 meeting that the statutory notice regarding Dr. Kozak's reappointment was given by President of BOE without consent of BOE, without Dr. Kozak's yearly appraisal. We in public feel that you're not following by laws. Can you explain?
I will not explain Dr. Kozak's contract or his, um, employment with the district.
The same answer. In last June 7 meeting, you President of BOE said you cannot disclose details of internal posting of acting superintendent. Why? We taxpayers demand this information, and I have worked in corporations. The internal announcement posting comes, but after 15 days, you have to post the same thing outside. So can you explain to taxpayer, me and many of us, why you cannot discuss what is the criteria of the acting superintendent and what you're looking at?
Because that is confidential information, that's being discussed in closed session, and when the time comes, we will be able to discuss-
We are just asking as a public, what is the criteria of the superintendent you are looking for? You do not have to discuss what is posted. What is the criteria you're looking for, the acting superintendent, that we public taxpayers are asking you, requesting you, please?
The, the criteria was listed in the posting, um, and on the, um, I believe it was listed in the, um, in the, under the website.
Anyway, I don't want to take a time. Are you following the laws that you cannot disclose to the public what the acting superintendents' requirements are? We are not asking for what is posted, we are requesting what criteria you're looking for.
The criteria is listed in the posting, I am following the law.
Yeah, you are always following, running this institution, following the laws, getting rid of the people, following the laws, not even under, following, giving information to BOE members, and that is not fair. So, which other contracts are under renewals? Please, which other contracts are expiring? Is the contract for the district attorney also is going to be expired? My question is, let us talk very simple. Is district attorney's contract is under renewal, please?
It is on the agenda.
Which agenda? Today's agenda?
Today's agenda.
Okay, that's great. Another one thing, last, another one thing. Dr. Alvek is working on policy for homework. Let her present. This half-baked issue, you know, I have met Dr. Alvek, and she had a good explanation when I met in January what her plans are, you know? So I was looking today for her presentation, but the agenda was full. So, Dr. Alvek, I look forward for your presentation in July. It will be not half-baked story, it will be full-baked policy, so we want to listen to you on that. Thank you very much.
Krishna DeGale, Levin Jake Place. Right, I have a question about this school, right? What's the next step on the referendum?
We don't have an update on the referendum.
Okay, here's my concern, right? Today the interest rates went up by quarter point. There are two more rates coming this year, and you are not planning to put anything on the referendum. We are going to pay more in ta, more in interest than on what we can borrow. This is going to be more expensive for this township because of your refusal to follow the red tape or improve on the red tape. What's the choice? I mean, what are you going to do about the interest rates, and what are you going to do about the referendum? You can't certainly do anything about the interest rates, but you can actually expedite the referendum.
We cannot expedite the referendum. There are five days during the year-
Okay, let's not go there. I know the five days, because we've heard it when Dr.-
Well, if you're gonna ask me a question, then please let me answer the question.
Sure, alright, go ahead.
We have five days during the year where we can have a referendum. The, the next one we can have is in October. We will not have anything on the agenda for a referendum, because we needed to get it back in March for September, October. For December, we would need to have one now. There has been no recommendation from a steering committee or a, a, um, administrator to the Board of Education in regard to a referendum. The next time we can have a referendum would be January or March, and that's what we are looking for.
Right, but what has stopped you from following up on the referendum? You went in onto the referendum with no Plan B? You, you expected that it would pass, but if it failed, there was no Plan B in there?
The Plan B was that if it did not pass, we would have to go back to the public, and which we did through a survey, find out what, some more information, get an updated demographic report, and then come up with a, with a plan that we think would be passed next time. The also plan was to make sure that the teacher's contract was settled, so that we can get teacher support, because we knew we didn't have teacher support on that.
So, um, again, the teacher's contract was purely a board's making, right? It wasn't the township that, uh, you're punishing on the teacher's contract. Teacher's contract was with the board. We don't want to go into why the teacher's contract wasn't signed, but as a taxpayer who is living in Monroe, my problem is, you know, the interest rates are going up, and there is no referendum, and the earliest you could do is in March or January of next year, and this year is a washout. And meanwhile, there would be an additional year delay in the school districts coming in, there would be OpEx coming in, because there would be trailers there, probably even in high school.
And that is, that is all correct, and information that we did in all of our budget pres, not our budget, or referendum presentations, if it didn't pass, we were, we were told the public that they were looking at higher costs because of interest rates going up, the cost of materials going up, and we're gonna look at more trailers and a year's delay in, in any school at this point.
Okay, the way I remember that Plan B was that, you know, hey, you would turn around and just put it back for a next word, um, which your-
That was a consideration, but we never said we would exactly put that back right on the agenda.
We could debate the semantics for all we want. The other point I wanted to bring out before my time runs out is, um, the budget would be signed by the governor, um, July, June 30th, right? Which is about two weeks from now. What is the board doing right now between now and June 30th to influence that we get additional funding? Not, uh, 300,000 or 400,000?
Well, I'm hoping, well, I know, me personally, and I know Mr. Ryback, because we've done this together, have had conversations with our legislators. We, I would hope that the public and, and other board members would be writing to their legislators and the, um, governors, Governor, um, Murphy and Senator Sweeney.
So at part point-
And at this time, your, your time has, is up.
Raguchi Turi, 23, Green Ash Street. I want to talk about Unified Homework Platform. I brought it up a couple of months ago. I mean, today, somebody spoke about the homework thing, right? It may be appropriate time to talk about it. Not all teachers are following the same, uh, website or the Google classes or, like, you know, if I have to, as a parent, if I have to look at my son's homework, I get to follow up either on his, uh, on his notes or on his Google class or some other place, like, you know, it's not consistent. Is this something that a board can look into it to mandate? All the student homework go into some unified location, so that the parents can look at it and work on them?
I, I believe that, um, Dr. Alvek? I, I believe that's something that will be in the policy.
Yeah, that, I did mention that during the district goals. That is something that we're looking at, is, is a program called Schoology, which will be where all of the parents would be able to see that. Grades are still going to be in Genesis, that is our student information system, so grades will be in Genesis, but we're gonna be moving towards Schoology. It's going to take a couple of years to fully implement it.
Okay, but are we starting this year?
We're starting in, it, half of the staff at the high school will be trained in Schoology during the next school year.
Cool. And second thing that I brought up about is the bathroom sanitizations in both Oak Tree Elementary and then High School. My kids go to both the schools, and they've complained the bathrooms are really bad. And I asked last, I think, two or three months back, in the same school board meeting, I mean, are there any inspections being done to randomly check how, how well those are maintained?
For, just, I just wanna clarify, randomly, like, inspections of the facilities?
No, the bathrooms.
The bathrooms?
Yes.
Okay, in the schools. Um, Mr. Gorski, wanna speak to that?
Yes. We have a day shift and a night shift custodial crew, and I respectfully, you know, disagree with your statement that they're in unsanitary conditions. Uh, they are also, uh, reviewed by P.E. OSHA, Public Entity Occupational Safety Hazard. Also, the, the New Jersey Department of Education comes through every year before opening schools and inspects all of the school facilities with a very, uh, sharp eye for looking at any, uh, unsafe conditions, and includes the bathrooms, and we walk through and tour. I also am frequently in the schools and, uh, inspect the bathrooms on occasion, and I will tell you comparatively to other school districts that I have inspected, um, ours are in the utmost sanitary condition, in my opinion.
And, and Dr. Kozak would like to follow up on that?
I just wanna make sure I understand what school is. Did you say Oak Tree?
Oak Tree Elementary and then, uh, the middle school.
Okay, Oak Tree and Element, uh, Oak Tree Elementary and the middle school. I will follow up with the director of facilities to make sure that he follows up with the custodians to make sure that anything that has occurred recently is addressed. Just, you know, things happen sometimes.
Sure.
Gets busy by the end of the year. I wanna make sure that if your stu, if your child's coming home and saying that it's unsanitary, we, we will check that and follow up.
It's not that, you know, my, my kids are just saying this, you know, I heard this same complaint from a couple of their parents too. And if somebody says that on the inspection is happening, maybe they might work it out, like, you know, make it look clean. But what I'm asking is a random checks, not, like, you know, by a third party or make sure those are properly sanitized.
Absolutely.
And then the last but not least, uh, thank you, Mr. Kozak, for your metrics and all, like, and that proves us the confidence that we have on you, and thank you very much for all your efforts and make sure, ensuring that our schools are doing really good. And, Ms. Kathy, we are totally disappointed with your responses. Not that I know, I agree that there are a lot of legal matters you don't want to discuss, but it was not, even the board members don't know a lot of information. Uh, as today, Michelle pointed out, she was requested for, to be a part of the homework committee, she's not even invited. Those are things that-
Thank you, Chris, your, your time is-
I understand, but those are the things that is, a board or somebody can look into those, like, you know?
That's why we have committees, and that's why we have committee reports, and they bring the information to the board.
And so she was requesting to be part of that meeting, she was not invited either.
Well, she was not on the, um, the, um, curriculum committee. She's an alternate to the curriculum committee.
So, board members who are not part of the committees cannot attend those meetings?
We can only have five people on a, on a committee, otherwise that would be considered a quarm.
Thank you.
Good evening, Ramraghna 600 Strive, Monroe. Again, congratulations to everyone, right? The good achievement from the students, not only the award ceremony, as well as the statistics that Dr. Kozak shared, so thanks to all our educators, and certainly thanks to Dr. Kozak really for steering the ship and, uh, getting Monroe to a much better place, and we hope he can do it for another few years. Regarding the, uh, referendum, right, again, it's disappointing. I shared some thoughts at the last meeting, a week back, a couple of weeks back. You know, again, we talked about the interest rate increase today, probably another, probably 50 basis points over the next few months, more in 2019. You know, we're gonna pay a price for this delay, uh, right? March referendum went through, I still don't understand why the BOE and the leadership didn't feel that we need to be moving on. Enough research has been done, we had talked about the Plan B in terms of the high school and so on and so forth. I just don't understand why you couldn't sell yourself a time clock between March to October, November to get this back and make it happen. You know, still disappointed, I still feel you have 90 days out there to make this happen. I don't think you're gonna get any earth-shattering statistics. You had mentioned at the last meeting that you're waiting for information from the administration. So what is the real holdup? Why can't you sharpen up your pencils and work towards that October, November? What was that date? And make it happen this year? Kathy, can I ask your, uh, feedback?
And I think I've tried to explain this at the last meeting. You need, when we come up with a, a, a recommendation from the administration to the board, and the board approves it, I now need six months to go to the state and get their approvals. And that's the holdup. At this point, I, I don't have the six months to get into September. We don't have a recommendation right now in June to get into December, so we are looking into nine, in 2019.
Right, so can you say today, okay, it'll be Jan. 2019? Can you work towards that? You have six months. Why don't you commit to a date, Jan. 2019, you're gonna make it happen?
It's, it's not up to me to commit to a date, it's up to the, to the, the administration, because they make the recommendations to the Board of Education, and the Board of Education acts on the recommendation. So when they feel that they have the, the, uh, the amount of information they need to make a recommendation to the board, that will happen. Mr.-
Okay, so-
We have also engaged the, the demographer to do, update the enrollment projections by school, so we could tell, you know, if, if the concentrations of enrollment are materializing like we had projected last time, and that, that, the numbers drive the process, that'll tell us where we, we really need to address.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Mr. Gorski, but, you know, you, you know that, I don't think we need it to the second decimal digit, or even driving by around Monroe will tell you, you know what, we need this, right? And I don't think it's gonna change it. So again, one is, we would like, from the next Board of Education meeting, whatever it is, we would like to get some formal response back from your conversations with the administration. Do they have that sense of urgency? Do they feel that pressure to make this happen? Or people wanting to, just, again, it's some politics or some other reason. So please give us that information, we really want this to happen. And really, as a board, even if it's a stretch goal, say that January, you're gonna be driving towards that, let's commit towards that, the public will support it, let's make it happen. Last piece I want is, uh, on the homework policy, uh, right? I, I don't know, maybe I was disappointed, of course, I looked for the full presentation. It's almost like I've worked in corporate America many years, it's like, kind of, let's do the same thing, let's put some lipstick on top, right? I don't think it's a rocket science to come up with these rules, saying two days before, two days after. I don't know whether that's gonna really change the outcomes for the students. Again, I, I'll hold back judgment till I see the whole thing. But one thing I would request is if you can share a summary or some of the elements from the research that was done to the public, uh, you know, we would like to take a look at that, right? Our goal is, are we being competitive, right?
You're welcome to come to the next policy meeting and listen to the policy, um, uh, presentation by Dr. Alvek. Once that, uh, policy has been approved by the board, we will make sure it's online.
Okay, and can the research also be?
All that will be put online.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Chrissy Skirby, 21 Preakness Drive. I'd like to point out again for the third meeting that this agenda violates the public's right to speak at public forum, as I have asked both the Board President and Board Attorney for the policy number that says the first public forum is for agenda items only, and I've not received a response. What I plan to speak about is on the agenda, however. What I would like to call the board's attention to is the three contracts you are being asked to approve tonight. The Board Attorney for $188,000, the Business Administrator for $201,000, and the Assistant Superintendent for $174,000. These three contracts alone are over a half a million dollars and deserve your utmost attention and careful consideration. When we brought the attorney position in-house, the thought was that the district would be saving money rather than having an attorney on retainer. What it has led to is an employee who is supposed to be representing the district, yet appears to me and many others, to be working to fulfill the agenda of the Board President and the, and the Business Administrator with a disregard for what is in the best interests of the district. I have reached out to the Board Attorney regarding an Oprah request I submitted on April 19th. By law, I was supposed to be contacted within 10 days with either the information I requested or a reason for why I was not entitled. What I received was a very condescending letter from the Business Administrator, saying that my request was overly broad and burdensome, and it would be fulfilled by May 30th. On May 29th, I received a similar letter, saying that now I would have to wait until June 20th. I reached out to Mary Smith, the Board Attorney, with concerns that I felt that this was being done to not provide me with information I requested until after this meeting tonight, which is against Open Public Records Act. She has yet to reply to my email sent last month. She has yet to reply to my email sent last month. Similarly, both the Board President and Board Attorney are in receipt of information that was provided by members of the public that show the Business Administrator speaking against current board members, the superintendent, and other Monroe staff. Furthermore, there has been information shared to the Board Attorney and Board President that the Business Administrator has a private tax business where he has solicited parents, board members, and other Monroe staff to do their taxes for monetary payments. There is correspondence that show that individuals were directed to come by the Board Office with their tax information. Whether it was done on district time or not, it is my feeling that this violates New Jersey State regulations on school ethics. Ethics Code 18A:12-24 for Conflicts of Interest says, quote, "No school official shall undertake any employment or service, whether compensated or not, which might reasonably be expected to prejudice his independent judgment in the exercise of his official duties." To my knowledge, this board has yet to discuss the information provided, nor has any action been taken. Yet you are being asked to approve a contract which makes our Business Administrator the highest-paid B A in Middlesex County. The Board President recently wrote on Facebook, of which I have a screenshot of the conversation, that everything she does is with the advice of the Board Attorney. If that is true, then the Board Attorney advised the Board President to write a letter to Dr. Kozak after the March 27th meeting, when board members walked out and there was no quorum, stating that he was not getting a contract. As we heard here last week, Ms. Arminio said that the board had not seen nor voted on that letter prior to it being sent. In my opinion, the Board Attorney is protecting certain individuals at the expense of the taxpayers, and therefore you should strongly consider not renewing her contract.
Anyone else from the public wishing to speak?
Lou Masters, and I'm Michaela Court. I have a comment, two comments and a couple of questions. We had Healthy Living Night at Oak Tree last night. I just wanted to say it was a great success, and I want to thank the board for that. We had a really good time, and the kids had a great time. Also, most people know I'm a germaphobe, and I'm always at Oak Tree, and I've never had an issue with the bathrooms there. I'm not saying there couldn't be. I was actually a janitor. I worked my way through college, and it does happen, but I've never seen an issue with the facilities there. Somebody said about, or somebody mentioned that an administrator purposely excluded a board member from attending a meeting. Can you clarify that?
An administrator purposely? Can you repeat that? Because I'm not quite sure what you're...
Earlier on, we talked about the homework policy, and then one of the board members says that she has to be invited to a meeting, and she was excluded.
Again, it was a curriculum committee meeting. We had a curriculum, we have a curriculum committee. As you well know, that we have five people on each of our committees. To have a sixth person attend that committee meeting would be a violation because that would be a quorum. So that person would not be allowed to participate in that committee meeting.
Okay, makes sense. This question's more for the B A. Are you, or you can direct it to him, are you the only Oprah custodian in the district?
Yes.
I am the Oprah official for the district. And in an event that I'm not physically in district and an immediate request is made, then the accounting supervisor has fulfilled the obligation in those rare circumstances. There are a great number of Oprah requests that require thousands and thousands of district documents to fulfill the request. These documents often have private personnel information, negotiations information, deliberative information, and other information that's not releasable under the law. And they have to be redacted.
By hand.
And that the redaction is performed by the Board Attorney. Because a lot of those items I mentioned go into specific areas of law. And prior to Mrs. Smith being on the board as the Board General Counselor, Willance Goldman and Spitzer perform the Oprah Request Review and Redactions at a material fee.
So, okay, so you're the only Oprah custodian, though?
Yes.
Thank you. You just actually led into my last comment about Mary. So if you were projecting out for the year, estimate, costs, and you just said about how much we spend on legal fees, would you estimate we're in the black with her salary?
Without a doubt. Without a doubt, I can tell you that when the position was created and Mrs. Smith was cherry-picked for the position because of her expertise in school labor issues and special education issues and many more, that the district was paying very high fees outside of the retainer to Willance Goldman and Spitzer. Mrs. Smith coming on board has saved the district over $100 to $150,000 per year. This year has been so heavy with Oprah work and special education litigation that it would easily go into the $150,000 range, in my opinion. I have not specifically calculated that, but I'm comfortable with that estimate.
And I will also add that she's been going through tens of thousands of documents in order to fulfill the Oprah requests. And there have been so many Oprah requests that she is putting in time on Saturdays and Sundays, sometimes 10 hours on a weekend, so that she can fulfill the Oprah request as soon as she has the time to do that. Not only is she redacting Oprah requests, but she has legal obligations, too. She's working on the M T E A agreement. She's working on two other agreements. She's working on a slew of special ed, what's the word I'm looking at? Suits. That, plus other everyday activities. So she is more than worth her weight in gold.
And just one more thing, I know my time's up. If we went ahead and sued the state, she would lead that effort?
If we went, well, it would start with Mary.
Okay. She would at least coordinate that?
Yes.
Thank you. Dr. Kozak, good job.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? Seeing no one, we will go to the, I will close the public forum.
Can I ask one question?
Who wants to ask a question? Mr. Russo, this is public forum. This is not the time for board members to ask questions. So we will go to Dr. Kozak's report.
I want, okay, I can bring it up right after his report, but it's related to his report.
To his report? Then we will talk it under comments and questions.
Before I ask the board to approve the items, I would just like to mention Ms. Margaret Cerny, who's a teacher of special education at the high school, who is retiring not until January 1st, 2019. So she wasn't recognized tonight, won't be until January 2019. But I always like to recognize the efforts of any of our staff members for their service to the students and the staff and the community. So with that, I would ask the board to approve the attached personnel items A through B-S. And as you can see, it is a very lengthy personnel agenda, and I also would like to just shout out a thank you to Kathy Baracallo, my secretary, for putting in an enormous amount of time putting this agenda together. But I digress. Items A through B-S, please.
Who moved that? Mr. Ryback and Mr. Rutske. Comments or questions? Mr. Russo?
Comment, and it's a good thing you asked me before. For Dr. Kozak, a couple of meetings back, a couple of meetings back, there was a question that came up about one of the staff that was moved from a part-time position to a full-time position without applying, and no vacancy announcement had been posted, which was against what we agreed on and against the policy. I see the staff members here again on the agenda. Now, it bothers me because to see someone who's part-time just moved into a full-time job, where now they're going to get pension and they're going to get health insurance. I'm just curious, and I'm not pointing any blame at you. I know it's a large list, and it was a large list the last time, and things can slip through the cracks. But how does that happen? I mean, the person will be enrolled in a pension fund, will be getting health insurance. That has to go through a budget, has to go through H R. How does that happen?
So, as you know, we did look into that matter and address it, and I did address it with the Board Attorney. We looked at an involuntary transfer from now to the end of the year, and this matter has been, it's being contested. So at this point, I would say that it's not fully resolved, even though it's on the agenda. But it has been, not necessarily that item, but the transfer has been...
Because as you know, there are other material connections with this and the policies that we're trying to create for the outside activities, and we believe there's a strong connection. But, I mean, I just don't see how we can pass through, we were told it's a transfer. How does that, how does that get through H R? How does it get through the budget?
Well, there's a couple of things we have to consider. One is we have to consider requirements to notify staff for next year where they're going to be placed. The transfer, we did look into it as an involuntary transfer due to requirements that were needed to fulfill an I E P.
Okay, there's no paper trail to that. So there's no, let's, you know, and other staff who are probably more qualified were overlooked.
Again, we did look into that to see that there was more than one person looked at, that other qualified staff were looked at, and the committee, the people, the supervisors chose that person for that position.
Again, I'm not casting any blame on you. There are a lot of names that we don't know them. We typically vote yes. As a matter of fact, there's a saying that goes, just put it on there, they'll vote yes because nobody, it's impossible for even for us to know all these names.
That's not a saying I would go by, but I understand what you're saying.
Well, it's happened. Here's the proof. Here's the proof. And again, there's no paper trail, because that's another thing, you know, I'm always pushing for, that accountability and that paper trail so we can always find out at the end who is accountable. Okay, so we're still looking into that one?
Yes.
That one. So how are we going to vote on this?
Into, not into the, we're looking into other issues related to that, not necessarily the...
Yeah, but how, so how can you give somebody a full-time job? It's not right. That you can take somebody part-time and just decide, without going through the process...
Yeah, again, I mean, it was...
I mean, we agreed on the Apple Track process, the vacancy announcement being posted in every school.
And we do use that.
And being, yeah, but...
Except in the case of...
It makes me wonder how many other cases are like this, that we don't know about?
Right.
This creates, I mean, I think this has to be overturned. I can't see voting for this. It has to be placed back in a part-time position.
Do you have the letter, the agenda item right now?
The original agenda item I have, yes.
I'm sorry?
The original one?
No, no, on the agenda.
Yes, yes.
What letter that is?
It's one of those, like, how many names? The page number I have here is 81 out of 108. I mean, I would think that all the board members would be equally alerted, alarmed at this. What's passing through a bunch of names here? B Q.
B two?
B Q.
B Q.
It was A I, I believe, on the original...
There's another?
Agenda.
I have A I that lists power professionals and special education teachers.
Yes.
And, right.
Does not the superintendent have the right to move employees around the district?
We do, for involuntary transfer. That's what we were referring to.
But that's not the case here. This was taking somebody that's part-time with no benefits, no pension, and then suddenly giving them, and, you know, this is something that we have to do. We have to, we have to, this has to be addressed and has to be corrected. Otherwise, there's no process. Why do we even go through the trouble of looking at this and signing off on it or voting on it?
No, I mean, as you understand, there is a process. I rely on supervisors to make recommendations for employment. As you can see, there's...
That's what I'm wondering. How does that get through the cracks? How does something, and are there any others?
Well, obviously, the supervisors have made that recommendation to continue.
You have another person. See, there's another one.
So may I ask the question? So what, what we're...
We're giving away jobs here without going through the process.
So, right, so the supervisors aren't following, aren't following the hiring process? Although, it's a question.
Sure.
It's not an accusation. It's a question. But the board is the one, the board in its whole hires. Everything's our recommendations. But recommendations should not be brought to the board unless they're properly following protocol.
Absolutely.
I think that's what Mr. Russo suggested.
And one of the concerns I have, and I think everyone should have it, knowing the situation with the superintendent, are some of these being passed through because they think they'll go undetected? I don't know. I can't make any accusations. But there's no way that we could know all of these people, what status they're in and what they're being moved to. We can't do that. So someone is not doing their work.
Yeah, I mean, let me explain the process. So every employee gets evaluated. That evaluation then is looked at by that person's supervisor. And then the supervisor makes the recommendations for his or her department. So we have, we have teachers that have, you know, in different months. A principal may make recommendations for the teachers in his or her building. The supervisors may, or directors may make recommendations for people that are their direct reports, whether that be special ed, whether that be transportation, custodial. And I have to rely on those supervisors, directors, and/or principals to make the proper recommendations. We have an H R department that makes sure, that makes sure that the process, the applicants are vetted.
Should make sure, yeah.
So, and I interview everyone that is new, that comes into the district. So as I put in the confidential report, I think there was 13 or 14 interviews, that's 13 or 14 hours this last week, just in interview, interviewing new candidates. People that are already employed, they have to be supervised, and if they have satisfactory evaluations, then they are recommended for approval for next year. So I'm thinking, I don't know for certain, but I think you're referring to a person who is already employed, who's being recommended for next year.
No, 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 that's not the case.
The issue with this one is that it was going from a part-time to a full-time position to fill out this particular school year.
No, that's not the case.
Okay.
That's not, that's not what happened. But the person was moved from part-time to full-time, given a full-time job. And I think there's a lot wrong with that. And like I said, when we get so many names, we don't know how many others are like that. There's no way of telling. So... It was, I don't know. You know, can I make a motion that we get a, we get a report from the supervisor on this? That we get a detailed, there has to be a paper trail. Somebody's responsible for putting that name through.
Sure, yeah.
So...
You don't need to make a motion. You could, Dr. Kozak, I'm sure will give you that paper trail.
Absolutely.
Okay, and can we table this?
I don't think you want to table it because you're not, you're tabling a whole section, and that would, we just can't table a whole section.
But then we got to get it right.
Right.
I mean, I feel very bad voting like this, especially knowing that maybe by granting someone a position, we are denying others who are probably more qualified, have been here longer. It's just not right.
But I understand...
It's not what we should be doing.
Right, I understand. But understand that we do post positions when they're new. There is one particular position I'm aware of that we looked, that I looked into, and it was brought to my attention. And it was brought to, the conclusion was that it was an involuntary transfer, which is allowable. But that was only that one particular case. All other cases...
But you can only transfer part-time to part-time, full-time to full-time. If you take somebody who's part-time and you move them into a full-time position, you're giving them a full-time job. And you're giving them all these other benefits. And we're not voting on that. Because that person didn't follow a procedure, because there was nothing set up for them. They were just pushed through the system.
Yeah, but that was also, that position was also posted.
It was not posted.
Okay.
It was not, you know, that was the thing I had asked at that first meeting, when I brought it up. Where was the posting? And we know there's no, there was no posting.
Right, that's because it was involuntary transfer.
And there was no application.
Right, but that is a situation where we looked at the requirements needed.
I mean, do we need to do an audit of all these names? Because, quite honestly, if one slipped through and Mr. Marvin, Mr. Braverman says he has another name, I mean, are there...
Yeah.
I'm just worried that maybe in your situation, people are pushing...
I would hope not, but we do...
I would hope not, too.
Right. We do have a process in place. We do follow it, as I said, through interviews, through observations. All of that is tracked. We have an online system that tracks all of that information.
I know, and it's stated on the website. They have to apply. It should be posted.
Right. Right.
This should have, this should have never, shouldn't happen. This shouldn't happen.
So, if you, if you email me about a particular individual, which I can't, I mean, everyone's riced, in a way, it's a new law, but I can't go into detail talking about an individual, but I will certainly get you the process for an individual.
Okay, and it's special ed. So, we don't want excuses because of certain needs. If there's no paper trail, it was not done properly. Because nobody can move someone from part-time to full-time without getting approvals. That went through HR, that went through the budget. There were a lot of supervisors involved.
Right. Yeah. But that, the particular situation you're referring to, I know I looked into it, because you had brought it up before, and I discussed it with a number of people, including the board attorney. Oh, yeah. And we looked at it as an involuntary transfer, so that was that one particular situation.
Remember, what's it, staff by department and budget for each department? Yeah, I spoke with Mary as well. And I just want to tell you that I had originally asked Mr. Gorsky for this. And one thing we agreed on, the person was moved from part-time to full-time. It's taken about two and a half years, almost three years, to get it. Didn't apply. That we know. I got it from you in one week.
My understanding from my conversations, there were several people that were looked
So, I want to say thanks for that.
at that had the proper training.
And since I have this, and I think it would be very useful information for everybody on That's, yeah.
I mean, unless I'm being told, unless I'm not being told the truth, but I did...
the board and the public, I would like to make a motion that this list, and I can send Look, there's a process. There was no vacancy.
I'm sorry?
There was no vacancy.
There was a need based on an IEP.
it to everybody by email, be posted on the agenda, each and every agenda. Where's the paper trail? Where's the...
It would all be in the IEP.
Basically, it's a list of the number of staff and the budget for each department. Let's see the memo, which says there was a need, and we selected that person.
Yeah, I could. I mean, that would really be the IEP that was, that determined that specific training
So, it's broken down by department, and there's number of staff and the budget for each department.
was required.
Well, that, look, that's, it's not the case. And we have the number of students.
Okay. But in fairness, if you want to email me the individual's name, I will look into it
Let's see the number of staff as well. It's very important. It's good for the board to see.
and get that, the trail.
You agreed it's very good for giving you a snapshot of what the budget is or what it In fairness, this shouldn't happen. It should not happen, without going through the proper process. will be like, so...
Oh, I agree. Okay. And actually, it's a good organizational tool, and that can be further developed. But I'm contending, what I'm saying is that it does, there is a process, and we do follow That's only the beginning stages of what you would request it. it.
There's a process, and it should be followed, but it's not always followed. Yeah.
That's a long-term project. Okay. I think the HR director needs to look at and really to identify that. To my knowledge, it's always followed, but certainly if you identify somebody, I will I think it's... certainly look into that.
But even what you provided in terms of number of staff and the budget for each
Okay, are there any other?
department, a nice breakdown, I think that would be very helpful to have on the agenda, And I had one other thing, because I had two things I wanted to bring up. because it's...
And again, another note.
Well, I defer to the board to decide on whether to include it on the agenda, but...
Okay. So, I would like to make that motion.
You don't have to make a motion.
Okay.
I will look at, because I don't know what you have, and then decide if that needs to be on the agenda.
All right. I'll send it to you, and then we'll...
Well, he can make a motion to put it on the agenda after we do this.
He doesn't have to make a motion.
Well, he might want to.
So, you want me to send it to you?
Yes, please.
And then, you'll get back to...
I will let you know, because it's the administration and the board president who makes, who creates the agenda.
Unless you make a...
Okay, because I, you know, when I first sent this...
Or unless it's not, it's not in policy either.
I know, but when I first asked for this, you were very reluctant to...
I was.
You know that.
Yes, I was.
And I don't see really any reason for that. It's numbers. It's no different than the number of students. It just shows the number of staff. So, I don't see why that would be a problem.
Send it to me, and I'll...
Okay, I send it to you, and what will you do? You'll come back to me or the whole board? How's that going to work? What happens after that?
Can I ask a question?
Mrs. De Mayo.
Because I have, I understand what you're talking about, but I haven't seen it. So, could you send it to Kathy, and she could...
I can send it to...
Actually, you know what you can do? Send it to, it's, we'll put it in the Friday confidential, either under Dr. Kozak's, maybe under your report, and send it to the board that way.
Okay. All right. Okay.
Okay.
I'm sure you'll all find it very, very helpful.
Anyone else? Mr. Chiarella?
Yeah, I'm looking at the enrollment again. So, last month, I think we were up 400 students. Am I wrong? Almost 400 students last time? And now, in the high school, I'm saying, in the high school now, we're up another 136 students. The thing that I want to caution us against is allowing political considerations to take the, to take precedent over, or precedence over our needs. So, what I'm afraid of is we're going to push this need for our high school and need for our middle school, not just until January next year, but through all of 2019 into 2020. And there'll be, there'll be different reasons that'll cause that. You know, I'm guessing, I'm reading the future, and I think that there'll be things like, you know, the state needs this, and we're not ready with that, and we needed projections, and we needed this before we could do that and finalize this and that. And what really will be going on is that they're going to kick this through a political year next year, and then into 2020, and we can't wait. So, I am asking that we do everything possible to ensure that next year, if it's going to be January, that it's January. And no matter what happens, no matter what we're told, no matter what political pressure comes down on us, that we say no. Our needs trump any other political needs that are going on in this, in this town at that time.
No, I agree, because we, I would have liked to have this in May, I mean, in March, done and get ready to go, so...
And I'd also like to just say that I want to make a motion that we make Dr. Kozak our interim superintendent.
We, um...
After this vote, there's a motion on the table.
Yeah, we have a motion, the superintendent's report. That would become under other board business. So...
I have questions.
Okay.
Okay, on Dr. Kozak, not that you need to respond, but just on your enrollment, we have the high school, the difference, the high school from one year and the next 136. Actually, Ms. Chrissy Skirby pointed this out a few meetings ago, and I've been following it since, that the high school is really the place that, that needs, if we're going to change the referendum, I mean, if we want to get the referendum back in, we could just get, put the first school referendum, right? We could, I just want the public to be aware that if we wanted to put the referendum in by September, we could just resubmit the original one.
Right.
So, that's a possibility. That could be Plan B, that we could resubmit the original one, we don't have to change anything. If, however, we want, because it does make sense that the high school should be addressed, then we have, we have gone through this already. We, we've, we know, because we were planning on all three, we probably know that we just, if we just do the elementary school and the high school, how much more do we have to submit? Why do we have to, why do we even need an administrative recommendation? Why can't the board just vote without an administrative recommendation? We know it, we need it. There is no question about it.
But we don't have the information to vote on. We don't have the...
What information? We have, we have vetted this whole process for years.
But now, the costs are different. So, if you're putting a new referendum on, even if you're putting the same referendum on, there's a chance that the cost could be different.
We have a point of order. There's a motion on the floor. That's what we're either discussing, or we're voting on it, and let's proceed.
Well, that's, okay. Good point.
I'll be, I'll be happy to talk about that at any given time, but not now.
I take your point, sir. So, I will ask a question then about AE. There's 45 tag program, tag teachers. Does every student, my question is in this, is, does every student that qualifies to have a seat for tag has a seat in the tag program?
Yes, what was that?
And the, and the parents are fully aware of what it's, what's the criteria is for tag? And has that changed?
Yes. It changed last year. It's on the district website, and parents are made aware of that. And if a student qualifies for tag, parents receive notification, and a parent either gives permission for the student to attend or decides that the student is not attending. But yes, every student who qualifies is given the opportunity.
They have a room in the classroom?
Yes.
Okay. Then, one more. Just on, and again, I guess I can't speak to the person, but I, it must be in the paraprofessional. There's a secretary job that seems to be filled by a teacher. I just don't understand that.
Is that ESI?
It's AI again.
Yeah. It, may I, okay, Mr. Arneal.
Yeah.
There is a case that we had last year, was a similar situation, where for our extended school year program in the summer, that there are certain positions opened up, such as secretary, and we've had, in the past, we've had teachers apply for that. And if no one else has applied, I mean, they've taken it, it's a lower rate of pay, it's...
That's fine.
It's open.
It's just a summer.
Yeah, it's just a summer.
It's a temporary. Okay. I just thought that...
Yeah. I don't know, I don't know if that's the exact situation you're referring to, but that's...
Okay. But that's what can happen.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing now, we'll have a roll call.
Roll call for personnel items A through BS. Mrs. Arminio.
Um, yes, with the exception of AI.
Where you vote?
No.
Thank you. Mr. Braverman.
No for BC, BD, and BE, and no under B1 for Barbara Urban.
Wait a minute.
All the rest, yes.
Spell the last name, please.
Urban. U-R-B-A-N.
Mr. Gorsky, I must, I thought it was a different section. So, is, can you please repeat what, what we're voting on? I'm sorry, I have to change my...
Personnel items A through BS.
A through BS.
Mr. Braverman, may I clarify? Your vote was yes, with the exception of B1 with that particular individual you noted.
BC, BD, BE.
No on BC, BD, BE.
Yes. Okay, I'd like to redo my vote. Yes, with the exception of AI, which is no. BC, which is no. BD, which is no.
So, noted, Mrs. Arminio's vote is yes, with the exception of AI, which is a no. BC, which is a no, and BD, which is a no. Is that correct?
Uh, that is correct.
Mr. Chiarella.
No, yes, except for BC, BD, BE, BI, and BQ.
Would you repeat the no's, please?
The no's are BC, BD, BE, BI, and BQ.
So noted. Mrs. De Mayo.
Yes.
Mrs. Lang.
Yes.
Mrs. Karina.
Okay. I recuse on AG, AI. Is AI a whole bunch of people?
Yes. It's a section.
Okay. I'm recusing on AG Nancy Dempsey, AI Eunice Fonseca. Recusing BC, BD, BL Kathy McDonald, and Bob Nekash. BM Eunice Fonseca. I'm voting no to BE, and yes to everything else.
So noted. Ms. Ryback.
Yes.
Mr. Russo.
Yes, on everything but BC is no. BD, I have, recuse myself. BE, no. BL abstain. BP abstain. And BQ abstain.
BQ abstain. Thank you. Mr. Roski.
Yes.
And Mrs. Kallpala.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any board action?
How did, could you say what the votes were? Was everything passed?
Aye.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna need some time to go through this.
Okay.
We should recess then, until we can come through this, so we could get a proper vote
The noes are B.C., B.D., B.E., B.I., and B.Q.
So noted. Mrs. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lang?
Yes.
Mrs. Carino?
Okay. Um, I recuse on A.G., A.I. Um, is A.I. a whole bunch of people?
Yes. It's a section.
Okay. I'm recusing on A.G., Nancy Dempsey. A.I., Eunice Fonseca. Recusing B.C., B.D., B.L., Kathy McDonald, and Bob Nekash. B.M., Eunice Fonseca. I'm voting no to B.E. and yes to everything else.
So noted. Ms. Ryback?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes, on everything, uh, but B.C. is no. B.D. I have, uh, recused myself. B.E., no. Uh, B.L., abstain. B.P., abstain. And B.Q., um, abstain.
B.Q. abstain. Thank you. Mr. Rutzke?
Yes.
And Mrs. Kolponowicz?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any board action?
How did, how, could you say what the votes were? Was everything passed?
Aye.
I'm out and I'm gonna need some time to go through this.
Okay.
We should recess then until we can come through this so we could get a proper vote on this so we know, the public knows what we just voted on and what the outcome was.
You wanna make a motion for a recess?
I'm making a motion that we recess.
Before we do that, can we authenticate that Patty is on the other line?
Patty, are you with us?
Oh, yes, I'm here.
Well, how do we know that's her?
Sounds like Patty.
Because I, I dialed her phone number and that's listed on this, on the...
It is me. It is I.
Can we, uh, give the secret board code?
Patty, what's the secret board code? But don't say it. Okay.
Motion to, uh, take a recess. How long?
Second. A ten-minute recess.
Will you guys call me back?
You could stay on the line, Patty, if you want.
Oh, okay.
We can call you back, Patty, in case you need to get up. We'll, we'll call her back, okay?
You sure? I don't wanna risk losing that.
All right, Patty.
But we'll just stay on the line, but I might get up and walk away.
Yes, you do that. We'll see you back in ten minutes.
Not walk away, but get help going away.
Yeah, no, go ahead. It's, it's fine. I know. I know.
At this time, the board will reconvene back into public session.
Yes, everything's calculated. You want me to, uh, is everybody ready? I'll see everybody.
Thank you.
At this time, the board will reconvene. I believe, um, Mr. Gorski has calculated or whatever he needed to do, tabulated, calculated, and will give us an update.
Yes, ma'am. I appreciate the, uh, board's patience in sorting through this. And as far as personnel items...
Patty?
Yes, I'm here. Yes, I'm here. I'm here.
You're back from your little, okay, walk?
From my nap.
Okay. Okay.
Personnel items A through B.S. Everything is a yes, with the exception of B.C., which did not pass. B.D., which did not pass. And that is all.
Okay. Thank you. At this time, we will go to the, um, you have something else.
Board action.
Board action items.
Recommend that board, the board approve actions, or, uh, I'm sorry, items A through W under board action.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any comments?
Eight through W.
Yeah, this is a little shorter. It shouldn't be as, as complicated with Ms. Carino and Mr. Russo.
What page does that start at? Eight through W?
I don't have a page on my agenda.
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine? Okay, good. Thanks.
Okay. Comments or questions? Ms. Arminio?
Uh, hold on one second. Look, we wait long enough for everybody else. Hold on. Eighty-nine? Because I do make notes on the original agenda and, oh, board action eight. Okay. So let me look at my original, because I do read this whole thing for hours and hours and hours. So if I...
I believe it. This was a hundred and some pages.
Yeah, a hundred and eight pages. I am aware of that. A hundred and eight pages.
Well, a lot of it was long.
No, but then we also have to read the background information. So if anybody else has a question...
That's why I don't see any other questions, Ms. Arminio.
Uh, I'm sorry. Eighty-nine, board action. Let me just tell you where I wanted to make a comment. Um, I think the lists of requested field trips, is that one in that group? Okay. So then let me say on the field trips, there are only two field trips on the agenda, I thought. And I think one was the Princeton Art Museum, which I was thrilled. So that's a comment. Good. Um, let's see. Avid policy. Okay, on W, um, in light of, uh, the, the most recent, um, vote, on W, do we have to change any of that, that appointment?
I don't believe so. He's currently doing that. And his contract, um, reverts back to this year's contract.
Okay. So that's still considered in this year's contract?
Well, it's not in his contract. That's part of his responsibilities as, that, this year, so it will be his responsibilities for next year.
Okay.
Is that it?
Uh, it's C, oh. Oh, yes. On the advancing opportunities, it's a...
Do you have a letter?
Yes, I have a letter advancing up, oh, letter, uh, no, it's fifteen. Is that, is that, that's, is that another board action?
Uh, I know. We go from A to W.
Okay. I'm done on that one.
Okay, then we will have a roll call.
Board action items A through W. Mrs. Arminio?
Uh, yes on everything but no on W.
Mr. Braverman?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes on everything and no on W.
Mrs. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lang?
Yes.
Mrs. Carino?
Yes on everything, no to W.
Mr. Ryback?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Uh, yes on everything, no on V, and no on W.
Mr. Rutzke?
Yes on everything. Leave it at that.
Mrs. Kolponowicz?
Yes.
One moment.
Oh, did that pass?
One moment.
Sorry.
Um, board action items A through W has passed.
Okay, so we will go to the business administrators' report.
Madam Board President and members of Monroe Township Board of Education, it is recommended that board action items A through double O be approved by consent roll call.
Mr. Ryback, second. My, Ms. DeMayo, any comments or questions? Because I know there was a lot of reading for this, Mrs. Arminio.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question.
Go ahead, let him go.
Mr. Russo?
It's another one of those things that pops up from time to time, and it's not clear. So on number nine, it says, it is recommended that members of Monroe Township Board of Ed approve Amy Shaw from Aaron International LLC. And we never know who owns these companies. Is there any way we can provide that information? Because I, I don't feel like voting for...
I don't, I don't have page numbers online.
Can, can he talk into the microphone? I can't hear what he said.
Or, or could we...
Mrs. Lang would appreciate if everybody just talks into their microphone.
Yes. Would she?
She would.
Oh, she would, okay. So we're talking about number nine. And it's, uh, it's a recommendation for services from Aaron International LLC. And in the future, can we include the owners of the company? Or at least, we should ensure that nobody from the school, from the district, is an owner in the company.
Uh, I, I would be happy to speak to it because it's, uh, my report.
Right.
I believe we discussed something similar in policy committee, and I would recommend that the gentleman, uh, uh, refine that consideration at policy.
Okay. We don't have the information now, and we don't know who owns it.
No.
Who owns the LLC?
Apparently, unless it's in the, uh, uh, the supporting documents, that, no, I don't, I don't know.
Okay.
And which, which letter are you referring to?
Nine.
It's number nine.
Number nine?
A, number nine, yeah.
Number, number nine. Aaron International LLC.
Yeah, but it doesn't necessarily say who owns the LLC.
Right.
What about...
There's no disclosure.
Is that my report?
This is ten. This is nine.
Yes.
This is your report.
For the translator, for...
Yeah, no, I, I, I receive those recommendations from special education. We compare them if they're in the budget, uh, make sure that the rates are not improve, increasing over an exorbitant rate over the prior year, um, and then put it on the, the BA report. So this is coming at the recommendation of special services.
And number fifteen as well. There's another company there. Again, we don't know who owns it. We don't know if somebody from special education owns this company, right? And yet we would be voting to approve it.
More concerned, uh, uh, from a special education standpoint, that the children's needs are being served.
Yeah. Well, we have to be concerned about a lot of things. That's one thing. But if someone in the group is an owner and they're advancing their own business within the school, that's why they're on the agenda. And, uh, I think it's important for us to know that there are no conflicts of interest, that nobody, uh, from the district is or has any interest in that company. Wouldn't you agree?
Well, right now, we don't have a policy that's enforcing that. So when that new policy is created, then this would be part of the, there's a...
Okay. But yet, okay, but we don't have, we don't have the, uh, you don't know who owns it. I'm just curious because...
It's not, it's not required on these types of contracts.
I mean, I mean, you have a lot of them. You have Summit Speech School. You have, um, Advancing Opportunities. You have Oxford. Uh, uh, we don't have the information to see if anybody in the district owns any of these companies.
Okay. So you're, you would be in support then of the policy that I'm pushing, which would, would help us with this?
I, I didn't say I had a problem with your policy. I said that there needed to be some things that had to be looked into.
So you support it. Okay, but you see the need here.
I do see the need.
It's a real time need. Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thanks.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yeah, I just want to point out something too. So we're saying that these two numbers, nine and fifteen, that we're absolutely sure that, uh, no administrators, for instance, have any dealings with this business, whether from a service standpoint or from an ownership standpoint, because our bylaws, and I have them right here. I'll wait.
Uh, I beg your pardon?
I'll wait.
Nine, nine and fifteen, there is no requirement before putting forth on the board report to check the ownership, uh, of these entities.
But there is a requirement...
Or to explore conflicts.
But there is a requirement under our bylaws for administrator code of, code of ethics. No administrator or member of his or her family shall have an interest in a business organization or engage in any business transaction or professional activity that is in substantial conflict with the proper discharge of his or her duties in the public interest. No, no administrator shall use or attempt to use his or her official position to, to secure unwarranted privileges, advantages, or employment for his or herself, or his or her immediate family, or any person. And it goes on to say that. These are from our bylaws. I pulled this from ours. So what, what I think they're asking is, do we have anyone, we already have policies, we already have bylaws. Is there anyone in the, in the administrative capacity that may have an ownership, uh...
They would have to declare that on their ethics form.
That's only if they're at a certain level.
Or if they had some kind of an interest in a, in a...
Only if they're at a certain level. Not all staff.
Well, then I guess you can ask the administrators if they have any kind of, uh...
It's one of those things. I'm glad it came up because it's one of those points that I've been driving home. Uh, there were, there were things that come up that people could be taking advantage of, and we need those policies. That disclosure policy that I'm pushing, I'm hoping to get your support and everybody's support on the board because I think it's essential.
Ms. Arminio?
Actually, I, my question on fifteen is I thought that the, um, services or the invoice was very vague. And I, I wasn't sure, does this have to do with special education? I mean, because when I first read it on, it, it didn't say cerebral palsy, um, until I saw the background information. And I was really unclear as to what this is and who it's for. Advancing opportunities through assistive technology services.
Absolutely, one hundred percent special education.
But what is it? It's, it's an evaluation? Is it a software? Is it...
It appears that it's assistive technology evaluation. Assistive technology is used by special education students, perhaps 504 students. And this is an evaluation of, of the student and the assistive technology, perhaps.
Oh, so the student actually used some of this technology. It's part of their...
I would, I, I feel comfortable making that assumption.
Okay. No one knows. Okay. But I, I, maybe in the future, I mean, of course, I, I'm gonna vote for it because of the nature of it. But in the future, I, I hope we can get a little more detail about what it does for us, or what it does for students.
Absolutely. We'll, we'll do our best. Um, you know, the, these recommendations come from various departments that are contained in my report. And I don't have the special education, uh, wherewithal to, to maybe do justice to an explanation. But I will tell you that this comes from the Director of Special Services.
Okay.
And I believe it's a prudent item.
I mean, you know, it's just, it's just too vague, and I, I would like more detail as to who it benefits. The benefit to the children would be, uh, you know, important.
Yes. And respectfully likewise, if there's a question about anything on, on my report or any of the, um, board reports, please give a call, and then we could bring the information to the board meeting and, and cross-pollinate that information.
And I apologize. I, I started reading this at two o'clock today because I worked the last five days. So I, I couldn't call.
And just one more point. Because you brought up the special ed, the Director of Special Ed. That, that's the case. The same person, uh, is involved with that job that was passed through from part-time to full-time. And, uh, another thing is, with many of these companies, because I check sometimes just on my own, I go to those websites, and many times you, you can't get any information. Uh, you have to log in and register with them first. And of course, that's a good technique to screen anyone who might be from the school board looking to see who owns it. So I think it's important for us to, uh, put the owners...
Sorry, one more question on thirteen, unless somebody else is gonna speak. Um, I see that we're gonna pay Ross Haber another forty-five hundred dollars, um, for an update. Again, um, and I guess, you know, forty-five hundred dollars is forty-five hundred dollars. We know we need more schools, and we know we need another referendum. So this goes to my earlier, uh, concern as to why we keep paying these people when we know what we need. I, I, I don't understand why. Is it required that we have to update this for the new referendum? And where is that, where does it say that?
It was a request from the steering committee to get an update on demographics from Ross Haber. And, and Mr. Gorski can, can, um, you know, elaborate on that.
I, I would be happy to. And I, I think you'll understand the, the need for this by my conclusion. Um, some members are advocating for the addition of a high school component to the referendum. I, I understand that. There, there is a need there. We prioritized as best we could before. But if I asked the question, how many classrooms do we need? I don't think you would have reasonable information to make a conclusion. That's the purpose for this report. This does an enrollment study based upon the most enrollment, most recent enrollment counts, and then does a scientific projection for what we can anticipate or in the future. And that is what drives the project. To say we needed high school addition without definition is, is, um, is, is a motion. Yes, we need it. But how many classrooms? What type of classrooms? How many special education classrooms? Should the auditorium be enlarged? All these type of questions are driven by the demographic report.
Okay, then when we get this, when we spend the forty-five hundred dollars for this, I would like to compare it to the most recent one prior to this. Because I really don't think there's gonna be a significant difference. So I would request that with my vote yes for this, um, I don't know if I can change the language, that it is compared to the prior, the prior one right before this. Because I, I think we're just wasting time and money at this point.
To Mrs. Arminio's point, I will tell you that that's the first thing administration does, is we compare it to the prior report. We make sure that there's consistency with the, um, the formulas used. And quite often, we have a back and forth exchange with the demographer that where we disagree with, with particular issues.
Well, we're not using the Rutgers formula, are we?
Rutgers formula? No.
Is out.
Okay.
Can I piggyback on that a little bit?
Mr. Rutzke?
Just a thought. So, um, I, I would argue, with all due respect, that aren't we, don't we know that the high school addition as it's, what it can be, is gonna go to full capacity, regardless if it's thirty students or thirty-five students? The addition of the high school has to go to capacity, as I understand it, from the last search. So I, I would agree that, that this is taking longer than I think any of us wanted it to. And we'd love to get just another thing out that's, that's more comprehensive and people could start getting behind it. And I, I guess my question is, isn't the high school addition gonna be what it's gonna be, regardless of what this magical study comes back and tells us? And, and if I'm wrong, please correct me. I'm wrong.
Again, I go to the definition. What, if you're referring to going to maximum capacity...
Right. There's a set spot of the high school that could be added on to.
That, that could, that argument is, could be made. But even if you went to maximum capacity based upon the square footage available to put an addition, what design are you going to institute for that addition? How many special educations? How many self-contained classrooms? Do the cafeterias have to get installed? There's a lot of study that's driven from the, the demographic report. There's no basis for a decision without the demographic report.
Also...
I'd just like to add, uh, with all due respect, Mr. Gorski, to what Mr. Gorski's saying, I don't know if it'll, the demographic update will necessarily specify special ed or general ed or anything else about that. But what it will do is, um, looking at the latest housing. When we worked with Ross Haber before, he was making predictions based on, um, constructed models that we didn't have a lot of, uh, like, they used the, the birth ratio, you know. But this is a situation in Monroe where so many new houses were being constructed. And there could be predictions about the ages of the children moving into a particular, uh, housing development. This enrollment study will certainly provide a little bit more basis of, okay, the predictions were made a year ago. Now we have all these houses that have been built. were made a year ago, now we have all these houses that have been built. As Ross predicted, have his predictions been accurate? And that goes to Mrs. Arminio's point, you'll be able to look at the two.
I get that.
I'm going to go out on a limb and say, not, not go out on a limb, I, I would just like to clarify, with the administration saying, waiting for a, a recommendation for, from the administration to move the process forward, I would just, I'm not sure who you're referring to, but I would take myself out of the mix, because the last Steering Committee, we talked about moving forward with everything, and we haven't set up the next meeting. So, with all due respect, I just want to clarify that it was not me saying, you're not waiting for a recommendation from me, is what I'm saying. So, I just want to clarify that, respectfully.
No, administration is, you know, Jerry Tag is part of the...
I understand.
Yeah. Are there any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I just want to, I just want to say with regards to that, because I think Paul hit on something with that, and, you know, that the, we, we already went through plans where we, I'm sure, buildings and grounds, so we looked at even cutting up this library, what that would look like, all the different, you know, all the different things, and we did projections based upon where we would be with, with those things. So, you know, are we there now or not? You know, are we at where he said we would be now or not? If we are, then, then how far did he project out? And maybe we don't need to do this. If we're not, then maybe he's not the right person to be doing this. So, I think Paul hit on something pretty good there, but I think that, that's something that we need to look at.
For the record, I'll qualify one thing. I do understand that you can't just take the old referendum and throw it back out there, because it is a specific number, and I do know that those numbers have to all be reformulated, and I get that whole part, but, um, I guess I'd just like this to happen sooner than later.
Well, I would like to happen sooner too, but there's, there's...
The extra, the extra study, I could see it for an elementary school, I guess I just don't see it justified for the middle school.
Well, if you take...
Where are we getting?
Okay.
But that, that's just me, and I'm not...
Yeah, I, I don't want to debate that tonight, because, you know, we have more things to do. But, yeah, I, I think the state kind of ties your hands a little bit, and, you know, we, we have to follow them. But if there's...
One, I'm sorry, is F on page, um, the contract renewal for pupil transportation? I don't know if it's still F. Is that, is that what we're voting on now?
That is F.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, I just want to know, given the recent tragedy of the school bus accident in, it was New Jersey, right?
Yeah.
Um, and I know our, our school bus drivers are exemplary, and they do a wonderful job, but I see that we do have to hire out. The, do we get accident history and employee vetting from these companies when we do hire them for extra pupil transportation? I mean, do we have a, a way of knowing, like, if God forbid, we had hired that firm, would we have known? Well, they, they claim they didn't know, of course, but is there any kind of vetting that gets done from the Transportation Department when we, when they recommend hiring these people?
The answer is yes. It's performed by the Middlesex Regional Ed Service Commission. That's the entity that we mainly contract with for those services, and they also have to comply with board policies.
But was that the same regional service that said that that guy was okay to drive?
I can't speak to that specific incident.
Oh, okay. I just...
Well, that was a Bergen County.
That was Bergen County, so this is Middlesex?
Well, I know that the paramus is in Bergen County.
Okay, so this was a middle, this, you're...
This is Middlesex County.
Mr. Gorski, you're speaking of a Middlesex?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, could someone make a call to them and just make sure that they do that for us? Or that, you know, if, if they do do it, they let us know that they do it, that, that, you know, I guess the Transportation Department would do that, I don't know.
No, my, my comment was, it's governed by the Middlesex Regional Ed Service Commission, and that's...
It's actually Educational Services, it's NJ, yeah, they changed the name.
Yes, thank you.
What's the name now?
Educational Services.
Educational Services Commission of New Jersey. That's why it's listed as ESC NJ, so they provide services throughout the state.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Gorski, are you going to call to check that, or do you want me to call?
I'll be happy to call. Mrs. Arminio, would you rephrase exactly the question you wish?
I just want to know if somebody, if, if, if we have a way of knowing the accident history of this company and any employee vetting that they do? I mean, because we're just hiring dorms, school services, I think they may be wonderful, we don't know, but I, I would like to know if they do, if they, or somebody provides that kind of history or employee vetting.
Accident history and employee...
Vetting.
Vetting?
Vetting.
Vetting, what do you mean by vetting?
Um, well, how do they vet their employees? Yeah, what, background checks or...
What are the, the employment requirements?
The drivers, I'm sorry, the drivers.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. I can tell you that, you know, from our Board of Education here, we will not hire a, a new bus driver who has any driving violations on, on the thing. I can't speak to the specifics of the Ed Service Commission, I'm comfortable with their product.
Okay.
Uh, so are all the other school districts in the county, but I will be happy to ask those questions.
Well, I'm confident in our Transportation Department and the quality, as I mentioned, of our drivers, but this is not them.
Training, training, training.
Training, 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 yep, thank you.
All right, if there's no further questions, let's have a roll call.
Board Action Items A through double O, Mrs. Arminio.
Uh, yes.
Mr. Braverman? Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mrs. De Mayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lang?
Yes.
Mrs. Carino?
Yes.
Mr. Ryback?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
No.
No on all, thank you.
All, no on all, yes.
Very good.
Hopefully, we get the names.
Beg your pardon?
Not until you get the names.
Not till I get the names of...
Of all the companies and who...
Of ownership history?
He won't vote yes until you do that. I'm going to vote, uh, yes for all.
Mrs. Koloponowicz, Board Action Items A through double O has passed. Thank you, that concludes my report.
Okay, and since this has been a long meeting, and we still have some to go, I, I do not have a board president's report, other than to wish the, the community and our staff and our students a safe and happy summer. So, other Board of Education business, anybody wishing to...
Yes, I, I would like to make a motion that we, that we install Dr. Kozak as the interim superintendent.
I'll second.
Thank you.
I'll say.
Patty, did you get that?
Nope.
Mr. Chiarella made a motion to have Dr. Kozak as the interim superintendent, and it was seconded by Michelle Arminio.
Okay.
Comments or questions, although we can't talk about personnel? Now, we'll have a roll call.
The second was Mrs. Arminio?
Miss Arminio.
So noted. Mrs. Arminio?
Yes.
Mr. Braverman?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mrs. De Mayo?
No.
Mrs. Lang?
No.
Mrs. Carino?
Recuse?
So noted. Mr. Ryback?
No.
Mr. Russo?
Can we vote, or...
You, you were conflicted.
I'm conflicted, so I'll write that down.
You can recuse, he's conflicted.
Do you wish to recuse?
Well, that's what, uh...
That's what you have to do.
The board's secretary said.
I'll record that as a recuse.
Were I conflicted.
If you were conflicted, you would most likely recuse.
Yeah.
Mr. Rutzke?
No.
And Mrs. Koloponowicz?
No.
Madam Board President, that's three yays, five nos, two recusals. Motion does not pass.
Okay, is there any other Board of Education business? Okay, then we will go to the public forum. Anyone wishing to speak about anything, please come to the microphone, state your name and address to the record. Okay, seeing no one, we will close the public forum and go to the closed session resolution, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe hereby moves to go into closed session in accordance with the Sunshine Law, Chapter 231, of the Public Laws of 1975 NJ SA 10:4-6 through 10:4-21, to discuss the following subjects: harassment, intimidation, and bullying. I finally said that word right. Acting Superintendent search, deliberation process, personnel matter. Following closed session, action may be taken. The discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public at such time as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Mr. Ryback?
Second.
Second by Miss, Miss De Mayo, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed, Mr. Chiarella is opposing.
I am too.
Miss, um, Miss Arminio is opposing. Um, and I have a resolution I have to read before the closed session, so I'll do it now. It is recommended that the Board of Education appoint Stephen Ryback as temporary Board Secretary for the remainder of this meeting, in accordance with NJ SA 18A:16, there's 1.1.
I will move it, but I have one, just one, one request, that we take that thing away from him. The beeper.
Oh, take the beeper away.
No beeper for him.
Okay.
I second.
Second by Jill De Mayo, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Miss, Miss Arminio is opposing.
Oh, you're writing all kinds of...
Yeah, I got it.
Just for clarification purposes, are Franken going, actually leaving, or are they staying?
Well, they can stay for the HIB.
Okay.
Okay, motion passes.
Patty?
Yes?
We're moving on, Patty.
We're, we're going to the closed session at this point?
Okay.
So, we will call...
I'll give you, I will text you my home phone number, so you can call the phone in there.
Okay.
I have it, Patty, I'll go in there and establish the connection.
Good, Patty. All right, so the, we are, the board will now move back into public session. It is, um, twelve...
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight, and I have a, a resolution to read. I make a motion that the Monroe Township Board of Education appoint Robert Goodall as the acting superintendent of schools in the Monroe Township School District, effective for the period from July 1st, 2018, through June 30th, 2019, or until such time as a permanent superintendent is appointed by the board, whichever is sooner, subject to the following: one, negotiation of an employment contract acceptable to the parties; two, approval of the negotiated employment contract by the Middlesex County Executive County Superintendent, in accordance with applicable law and regulation; and three, approval of the negotiated employment contract by the board. The Board President and Board Attorney are hereby authorized and directed to take all necessary steps to implement this action by the Board of Education.
Yeah.
We need a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. De Mayo. Any comments or questions? Then, Mr. Ryback, we will have a roll call.
Oh, boy, okay.